Thing here. So, as Chair of the Pembroke School Board, I find it due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting via telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Cisco Webex for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through the dialing of the following phone number, 14084189388, and the password is on sau53.org under the Remote School Board Meetings banner. We also provided public notice of the necessary information to join the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting through Webex or via telephone. Again, instructions have also been posted at sau53.org under the Remote School Board Meetings banner. We're also providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call, or I'm sorry, please email Sandy Valine, that's S-V-A-L-I-N-E at sau53.org. And adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done via roll call vote. Let's start the meeting with roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law. Alright, um, let's see, April. Anne?
Present and alone.
Jean?
Present and alone.
Amy?
Present and alone.
Thank you, and this is Andy, and I am also present and alone. So, um, we don't, looks like we don't have any minutes to take action on, so we'll move right to Agenda Item Number 3. Um, and 3A is Public Comment. So, if this is your first time joining us, uh, I'll give you a little bit of a rundown. Public comment on the remote meetings is somewhat tricky. Um, we will first look for Hands Raised, so if you're on your computer and you can find the Raise Hand button, if you've got something you'd like to contribute for public comment, go ahead now and push that Raise Hand button, and Mr. Morris will look through and find you, and um, he will unmute you one at a time and recognize you to speak. And then after that, we'll go to phone lines, um, if there are phone lines that want to speak also. So with that, if there are any hands raised, Mr. Morris, you can start cycling through.
Okay, we have Carrie Dean first.
Alright, alright Carrie.
Thank you. Uh, I first wanted to say thank you very much to the Hill School staff, especially Mrs. Montana, Mrs. Pereskeva, and Mrs. LaRue today. Was a full remote day for my daughter, and I was a little bit concerned with her being online and trying to focus, and uh, the teachers really kept moving, they kept the kids' attention, the breaks were good. So, if we gotta be fully remote on a day, I appreciate the way today went, so I want to just thank them very much. Um, the second thing that I wanted to talk about, uh, just briefly, was um, part of the discussion at the last school board meeting by a couple of the school board members. I noticed the topic is, um, the Board and Staff Communication is in the Policy Review tonight, um, and I'm just kind of looking forward to hearing how else some members plan to silence some of our teachers. I find it rather unprofessional, certain members of the Board are complaining about parents reaching out to them directly instead of going through the Superintendent, um, just because they're teachers. Uh, I think it's time some members of this Board, uh, just focus on the fact that these teachers and these administrators are on the front lines. They're the ones who know what's best for our children, um, inside the Pembroke School system. We go through meeting after meeting, and we continue to hear members say, well, we're doing what's best for the school, for the members of our community, our students, and I, I don't, I don't agree with that when you're trying to silence the teachers who are reaching out to you as a parent. Uh, they, I'm sorry, I lost my place. They, they, they're in a very uncomfortable position. Not only are they worrying about their own children going to school every day, but they're worrying about the children who walk through their school, their schoolroom door every day. So we need to stop trying to silence the experts and stop playing games and hiding behind the policies, and just listen to what the teachers and the administrators are telling us. And if they're reaching out to you in an email, they're reaching out to you in an email because they feel passionate about, about a topic that's being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Tori Barber.
Go ahead, Tori.
Good evening, sorry, I just had to change forms of listening because of computer issues, but um, my name is Tori Barber, and I'm a teacher at Three Rivers and the President of the Education Association of Pembroke. I want to start by apologizing that the District Policy, GBD, Board Staff Communications was not followed appropriately last month. Our staff were unaware of this policy, and our intent was not to circumvent a standing-borne policy. Following the misunderstanding, Superintendent Sherman sent the policy to all staff members to inform the staff of the proper protocols. And the Association has reiterated Superintendent Sherman's email and will endeavor to ensure that the policy is followed going forward. Again, our mission above all else is to provide the best and safest education possible for the students in Pembroke. With the recent need to shift educational models at both PA and Hill to full remote due to contact tracing, we encourage the Board to forestall a return to full in-person instruction. With the current COVID numbers trending up in the state, this will ensure that the health and safety of the students and staff remain a priority. The EAP would also encourage the School Board members to visit the school during the current model and hybrid model to help inform the decision and ensure that it's the best interest of the students. I would also like to personally invite an invitation to all School Board members to join me and other members to spend time inside the classroom or in our remote classes to see what a typical day looks like for both students and staff in the current hybrid model. Per Policy GBD, if interested, please contact Mrs. Sherman to set up a date and time. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Tammy, Tammy Sanjan.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay, hi, um, so mine is similar about the policy of staff communicating through the Superintendent to have access to the school board, so I want to, I'm wondering if there is also a policy on citizen communication with school board members during live meetings. Um, at the last school board meeting, a school board member read aloud a live Facebook post while the meeting was in progress. Traditionally, in public meetings, community members state their name and address for public record, because the community has the right to know who is providing input. So, that kind of conduct by a board member during a live meeting abolishes the equity of voice and access to the Board. It also compromises the integrity of the decisions that are being made. If there isn't a policy that exists regarding School Board Member Conduct during live meetings, then it is time to adopt one, because this has happened in more than one meeting. And in an, in an effort to be solution-oriented, a suggestion would be to ban the use of devices during meetings to ensure that access to social media, personal text, or emails do not compromise the integrity of the decisions being made. And um, the other issue that um, I keep seeing when I join School Board Meetings is um, for security and identification purposes, it is extremely unsettling that some Board members turn off their video or don't show their faces during remote School Board Meetings. Using both the audio and the video supports the validity of the person speaking. And because it is also common for technical failures to happen, the use of both the microphone and video will decrease the chances of losing a participant during a meeting. Also, at the last School Board Meeting this past Tuesday, um, a Board Member using only audio was unable to respond when her name was to adjourn the meeting. So, but if her camera were on, she could have nodded, gestured, or even wrote a note and held it up to the camera. But more importantly, the community has the right to see who is speaking and making decisions on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Brian Gleaton.
Go ahead, Brian. Can anybody hear Brian?
Brian, I think we're still on mute.
I apologize, thank you, I'm actually in the car this time. Um, I wanted to take a moment to just, uh, support my decision on the communication plan, or the decision on the communication plan, to stay as it is. The teachers currently have an avenue to reach out to the Board in a professional manner through their administration, and as well have representation and unionization. So I, uh, as a citizen, support the way the communication plan is currently, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's it for Hands, I'll just ask if Carrie Dean and Tammy Sanjan and Brian Gleaton could lower their hands unless they wanted to talk again. Uh, we could go to the phone lines if you can.
Sure, let's see how many we, one, two, three, yeah, let's hit maybe four.
Okay.
I can't see the, if the mute buttons are one way, I'm on the web client this time, it's not quite as good.
Yeah. I'm having a hard time unmuting them. Let me try this. As you can tell, I'm not Patty Sherman. She'd be able to help me with this.
But did you stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night? Okay, so it looks like, uh, technical difficulties unmuting the phone lines, um, there's not that many, so I'd like to proceed, but I do want to hear those voices if there's something to say, so um, if you are on the phone and you have access to a computer, if you want to send Sandy an email, uh, with your comment, I'd be happy to read it, um, or have Sandy read it. And so what I can do, um, is, you know, I'll, I'll check in with Sandy in between Agenda Items. I won't wait until the end of the meeting to make that happen. Um, so if you've, if you've got, if you're on the phone, you've got a comment, um, go ahead and send Sandy, that's S-Valine, S-V-A-L-I-N-E, at sau53.org. Um, and Sandy, maybe if I haven't asked you by 7:15 or somewhere in there, throw a shoe at me and, and we'll get that done. So apologies for that. Dan, are there any other hands right now?
There are not, no, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to do that. It's not working the same way. Sorry.
No problem. Okay, then with that, we will move on to Agenda Item 3B, which is, oh.
Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we got somebody.
This is Lawrence Meyer, I don't have a comment, but if people are having issues with the phone, something happened this week, you have to hit star six.
Oh, okay, well, let's give, well, we'll give it a minute then, if anybody's on the phone and has a public comment, if you want to try star six, um, I could definitely see Ms. Blair go unmuted, so if anybody wants to try that, um.
Someone mute me back, why don't I unmute my?
Okay, so one more time, if you're on the phone and you want to give it a try, you can try star six and see if that unmutes you. I'll give it a minute or so. Also, if you've already started writing an email or you're more comfortable doing it that way, feel free to go ahead and do that, I'll still check in with Sandy in a little bit. Alright, I'm not seeing anything, so we'll move on to Agenda Review, um, 3B, uh, let's see. Do any other, I think I've got a note here, I've got to check, um, I've got some notes on different papers, but does anybody have any Agenda questions? Board members, that is.
Andy, this is Anne.
Yep.
I wanted to see if we could add, um, using PA for a facility for voting, if we could add that back on to the Agenda this evening?
Sure, uh, we'll put that as continuing business, and I will put that in, uh, we'll make that the new 4C. So we'll make Board Reports 4D.
Thank you.
Voting at PA. Um, and then I was, uh, we have a, another thing from Linda, so Agenda Item 3D is, uh, has a bus stop request, but we also have a update on ridership numbers, um, so I'll put that right in the same spot under, um, under 3D. We'll ask Linda about that document. Any other comments on the Agenda before we move on? Okay, um, then we'll move to 3C, Gifts and Donations. Agenda says zero items, Mr. Morris, do you know anything if there's anything other than that?
No, I don't have any other update on that.
Okay, and we will move on to Consent Agenda. So we've got one item there, and it is, oh, I, I should go back, I'm sorry. Agenda Review, I will say, uh, we are planning on going into non-public session under small letter A, which refers to the dismissal, promotion, compensation, or disciplining of an employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her. So we usually note that under Agenda Review, so, okay. Alright, so, 3D Consent Agenda is a couple of bus things. So Board Members, um, hopefully you saw in your drive, there was a bus stop request. I think Linda was going to join us tonight, I'm not sure if she's, I assume, I think she's been on the phone the last couple of times, so we'll see if we can get her in a minute. So for the bus stop request, it looks like there's a new family that moved in, um, and requested a bus stop, and Linda seems to have agreed with that, but also said there was a bus stop a couple houses down from there that has yet to be used this year. So if I understand correctly, I think she wants to remove the one that hasn't been used and basically relocate it a driveway or two up the road to the, to the new house. Dan, I see a Linda, but sadly, I don't know Linda from Dale's last name, so I'm not sure if that's the correct Linda.
Uh, Linda has been accessing these meetings through the phone.
Okay.
Uh, I believe she's the, the number with eight six at the end, although she'll have to unmute herself, as I still.
Yeah. Linda, can you try the star six thing and see if that unmutes you, if you're there? Not looking good. Um, well, okay, so I guess first of all, I think we have all the information that we need, oh, oh, hey, we got her. Okay, go ahead, Linda.
Hi, um, yes, I do recommend that bus stop, it's for Hill School students and definitely don't want them walking on that curvy road up there. So I highly recommend it.
Okay, and was, was I accurate, that there's one up the road that you want to remove and kind of basically just swap it out?
Yes, and if they do decide to ride, they can walk down to, because they're middle school students, they can walk down to, uh, the new bus stop.
Okay, um, and then we have a spreadsheet in our drive with the, the counts, um, for bussing so far. So I wanted to see if any School Board Members had any questions about that, and then see, Linda, if that, if there's anything you want to say about those numbers, or if, if, you know, you think that there's any changes that need to be made, or if things are kind of working well right now, or kind of just, you know, where we're at. Um, so I guess I'll do Board Members first, do you guys have any questions about these numbers?
I don't have any questions, thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Andy, this is April, I'm just curious, um, was this information asked to be presented to us as far as the numbers? Is that why we're reviewing those tonight, or is it just as an FYI?
I did, I know, I remember a meeting or two ago, I asked if, if they, if they were keeping track. Um, I don't, I don't know if I specifically asked that they present them to us, but um, I know it was brought up, and they said that the drivers were going to keep count.
Thank you.
Um, so I guess Linda, if there, if, if there's anything that you, you know, want to point out about this spreadsheet, anything you want to draw our attention to, or if you have any recommendations based on it, I'd be happy to hear those.
Okay, no, the numbers are looking good, uh, particularly when you come in one or five students and up to 20. So what I've done, I took the present bus route and even run. And I broke it up between cohort A and B with the bus stops and with the bus route, the bus stops that we are using only. I eliminated, I didn't put the stops on there that were pre-approved, because we have not made a stop there, so timeframe, I could put Route 1, Run 1, and Run 2, strictly 1, Run. One trip. And they still would be to school at 7:30, 7:38. And then the afternoon, they would be dismissed together, so no one would be behind.
Okay, and that, that would keep us at a, um, a number of kids on the bus that would still meet all the recommended safety guidelines and everything for the moment?
Yes, that would still be the social distancing, we have several with siblings, so that helps. So, yeah, we're still good on that. And I figure if I didn't put all the bus stops in, even the ones that we weren't using, that if parents see they're not there, uh, then they're going to call me and ask for, if they can have their bus stop back, and then maybe that's when we can keep track of numbers.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions about that?
Andy, this is Anne, so was she saying instead of doing Run 1 and Run 2, we combine them?
I think that's what I'm hearing, is that accurate, Linda?
There's no stopping at the school in between, it's just keep it one steady run.
Okay, so the numbers that we have here for Run 1 and Run 2 AM, those will be combined instead of having two separate runs?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, the other question I had, Andy, some of these are left blank. So is it that the bus didn't run that day, didn't need to run that day, there was nobody going home? Or is it just nobody was, the bus ran, but there was no students?
Are you talking about like 11:03 through 11:06?
Um, 11:03 was a no-school day, I'm talking about the, um, 10:22 and 10:23. Um, the PM bus Run 2, those are blank, so I just didn't know if there was just no riding or the bus didn't have to run that day.
It totally ran, I didn't, some didn't get their count that particular day, or I missed it, one or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Linda?
This is April, I just have a question about, to make it one straight run, how does that impact pickup times and families that need to be notified of how a bus time, pickup time or drop-off time may impact their child?
Probably the bus times, there may be a couple of different, couple minutes different what they presently are, but again, I would like them posted anyway, just so they can see it doesn't, it's one single run. And not dropping off at the school and heading back out again.
So you would make us a new, um, a new document similar to the one we've previously approved that would show one run and have the new times on it, and you'd recommend that we post that for some period of time before we actually start it, so that people have the information?
Right, because I haven't done the PM times yet. Connecting with the drivers tomorrow morning, they're the ones out there, so they can probably give me more afterwards, effort time. And then I can fill that in, and then it will be completed.
Okay. Other questions?
Uh, Andy, this is Anne, I just had, um, one question and I wanted to ask um, the, how smoothly the buses are done on Buck Street? Because we will be done doing that paving by the end of next week. So I didn't know if there was a problem, if there was an impact that maybe the GPW doesn't know.
No, the buses have been running fine on here, they've been waiting for us, I've given them the timeframe that we would be through, so everything went well.
Okay, um, and then just a side note, we're going to be, um, doing paving on Dudley Hill. So Andy, how do you suggest we get that information to the bus coordinator?
Um, I guess whoever the town deems appropriate, if it's, um, you know, you as a Select Board Chair, or BJ, or whoever, I would just, I guess I would send that over, Amber, I think, has been the one that's been communicating most with Dale. Um, so maybe send it to Amber and Patty both.
Thank you.
Yeah, BJ's been the one contacting me back and forth on Buck Street, so I'm pretty sure maybe he might contact me on Dudley.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, so as far as combining the two runs, um, anxious to hear, I guess, what the Board feels, I'm a little hesitant to actually take any actual action tonight, um, for a couple of reasons. First of all, as you know, and I meant to say this earlier, Patty was unable to join us tonight. Um, I'd like her input, but also, there are some discussions later on down the Agenda, about learning model and things like that, and I think.
Hold on, Andy's giving you a timeout.
I can't see her. Andy?
Sorry, is meeting being recorded?
Um, I think I have a, yes, I have a red dot on mine, yep.
Alright, I didn't see that, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, so I, I'm hesitant to take action until we can get some info put from Patty. I would like to hear from Amber, because I know she's had, she's done some transportation stuff, but also, like I said, there's some, some Agenda Items later on tonight, um, about learning model and whatnot, and if the learning model is going to change in any direction, that might impact, um, decisions around transportation anyhow. So, any, anybody else have feelings about taking action on this or other questions?
This is Amy, I agree, it's premature to make a change, an official change to the bus routes right now. I'd like to see that proposed revised schedule combining bus routes at our next meeting, and I think I'd be happy to approve that at that time. Uh, but right now, I'd like to move to accept the requested bus stop and eliminate the recommended bus stop.
Okay.
This is April, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, um, so discussion around the bus stop question. Okay, hearing none, then on a roll call vote, um, motion is to approve the indicated bus stop and remove the indicated, the other indicated bus stop, um, as suggested, uh, on a roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, thank you. Um, any other thoughts on the bus routes and schedule?
Uh, this is Anne, so Amy's suggesting that we wait to the next, um, School Board Meeting, um, which would be probably the 17th.
But yeah, the next one is the 17th, I think that's right.
And, and in particular, Anne, that Linda go ahead and prepare the updated schedule based on those combined runs.
Thank you, Amy, um, I didn't hear that you're, my audio kicked out, so I didn't hear your whole sentence, thank you. I, I agree with Amy.
Uh, April or Jean, anything?
This is April, I also agree that I would like to see something presented to the Board before we authorize any changes in the bus schedule, thank you.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, um, alright, so Linda, thank you very much for joining us again tonight. Um, sounds like there is an appetite to see that document, so if, if, um, if you're able to get with the, with the drivers and, um, bring that to us next time around, send it to Patty or Amber, or whoever you usually send stuff to, that would be fantastic, um, and I think that's it for tonight.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will move to Agenda Item Number 3, sorry, oh, I heard somebody.
That's, it's Amber, um, I just wanted to mention that I just received the documents that, um, for those revised routes, and we just put them in your drive right before this meeting, so.
Okay.
They, they should be in there. Um, I know you didn't have an opportunity to review them, um, but they're in there for review for the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, so 3E, um, an update on the current year budget, and we've already got Amber, so, perfect.
Uh, I do not have an update for you this evening, um, I did run a year-to-date, there is something, um, I don't know, we did have some changes with our software, um, over the last couple months, um, and I don't know if there's a hang-up in it or what, but when I ran the year-to-date today, there were a lot of red flags that didn't make sense. Um, and I don't know if there's a hang up in it or what, but when I ran the year to date today, there were a lot of red flags that didn't make sense. So I have a couple of people checking on some things within the system to see where it is. We've got some calls out to Infinite Visions. Um, to figure out where the issue is. Um, so with that, I'm not comfortable giving a year to date number that would not be accurate.
Okay, um, then. Uh, I guess, I guess I'll open it up quickly. Board members, do you have any, any brief questions about current year budget with that being said?
This is April. I'm just curious if we can be provided a status uh, via either our drive or email before our next board meeting? Since that's not prepared for tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see, I, I should be able to email something to you guys, at least a summary or something. That shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you, Amber.
You're welcome.
Others?
Andy, this is Ann. Um, I wanted to find out what the um, decrease in the budget, um, excuse me, for the bus transportation. And I wanted to find out if there's a modified contract for this year because we don't have the full staff.
I see a hand. Uh, Amber, I'm not sure if you're talking, but you're still muted.
Yeah, I just don't know if I should just talk or whether you should call on me, so that's why I keep raising my hand.
No, it's okay.
Uh, so the contract wouldn't change, but they only bill us for buses utilized. So if we're not utilizing all of our buses, we don't, they don't charge for that. So they're only charging for buses that we're utilizing.
So do we have a rough idea of what, like, so if we're running four buses now and, and last year we had eight buses, like um. I think you said once they built, they bill us like bimonthly, is that right? Do we have an idea of roughly what the savings is for every month that we only have four buses?
Well, we, they billed us one already for September. Um, but there really wasn't a savings on that one because we were in hybrids on, I mean, uh, we were a remote some of it, so. There weren't, there weren't savings on that one in particular, but I am anticipating seeing some for the October bill and I have not received that yet.
Okay.
So Andy, this is Ann, a follow-up question. So if we were hybrid for the two weeks, were we still paying the bus contract? Because they're stating now that we're only use, being billed for the buses that we're utilizing?
So we only pay for buses reutilizing. So if we're only using five of eight buses, we're paying for five buses. They do not charge, and I do review the invoices on the invoices. It does list the dates that they perform service. Um, so I am able to verify whether we utilize the bus during that period.
Because my question is, last year in our contract, we, you know, when all the schools shut down in March, we still continued paying. The contract because we had a contract with them. So you're saying now we do have a modified contract that says we're only pay for the buses we use?
So we had agreed to pay the full contract in the spring. Since this school year has started, Dale has agreed, we have said, we're only gonna pay for buses we're utilizing. Dale has agreed that that's okay, so we are only paying for services we're receiving. So we're not paying anything extra other than what we are actually receiving.
Thank you, Amber.
You're welcome.
All right, um, so we'll move on to three F, the fiscal year twenty-two budget presentation. Um, so I want to say for everybody, members of the public included, uh, this is the first time that we're. Seeing and hearing about this. Uh, I want to caution that it is our earliest and roughest draft of the proposed budget for. Um, next school year that will eventually be voted on in March. Um, so what I've asked Ms. Wheeler to do for us tonight is kind of just give us a breakdown of each um. Each group of lines, the eleven hundreds, twelve hundreds, et cetera, et cetera, and just give us a brief kind of what went up, what went down. Um, but this is something that this time of year, the board um, kind of shifts into budget mode and we will. We'll get a budget update at every meeting and we will all spend time between those meetings going through it. Um, and so I anticipate next time um, that we'll have a lot of questions to ask, but. This one should be more Amber letting us know where we're at and what we're looking at. Um, and kind of getting us geared up to start going through this thing. So I'll turn it back over to Amber.
Sure, thank you, Andy. Um, so first, before I start, I just want to discuss um, some of the items that are in the packet that I, we put in the drive. Just because we have some new people at the table and then kind of explain um, the color coding on the budget after that. Just so that you're aware um, of what I'm accomplishing here. So in your packet, I did number the pages below. Um, you have your operating budget within this packet. What follows your operating budget, that operating budget goes from page three to page twenty-three. Then you have your budget rosters that follow after that. After your budget rosters. You have um, the food service budget. Which starts on page forty-two. Then you have the high school enrollment. Um, what I included in that is what you've actually, you've seen before at the full SAU board meeting, if you've been there. I included where we ended last year and then an up-to-date of where we are as of um, October thirtieth. I have the district assessment in here. That one's been finalized. You've seen it in draft format. While there wasn't any changes, I've taken the draft off. I included your tax rate history. I've also included a surplus history for you. And I've included an updated sheet on your trust funds. So that's what you have in your packet this evening. If we flip to the budget on page three, you're going to see some different colors. So how I do this is, um, the. Column that is gray is the current column we're in today. That's our budget that we're living in for this fiscal year. The column that I have in red is what we're proposing. I've got some color codes that are in there. The ones that are dark red are considered fixed cost. Okay? Over to, all the way to the right under column P, you're going to see two colors. You're gonna see a blue and you're gonna see an orange. Anything in that line that is increased more than ten thousand or above is going to be blue. Anything that has decreased more than ten thousand would be an orange. So just so that you know, that's where, um, that's what those colors mean. Moving forward, any changes that I make between now and when we stop, um, you know, finalize this budget. Will be, I will color code in yellow so that you're aware that that's the change that occurred between the time we last spoke and the new time we meet. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, so let's begin. So account codes eleven hundred, which are lines fourteen through four oh one. Um, pages three to seven. We have a decrease in account codes eleven hundred by fifty-eight thousand, seven fifty-five. The changes that occur in that section, account code eleven hundred. We have a decrease in salaries, um, and that's mainly due to um, a position that has shifted from regular ed to special ed in Hill School. We're proposing less funding for substitutes. We have a decrease in consultant services. The supplies that we've listed are either flat or very minimal increase, and some of them have even been reduced. The tech replacement line inclu- is included, um, and it does have an increase in those lines, and that's due to our tech plan. Um, that has been presented to you over the last couple of years. Account codes twelve hundred, which are lines four oh eight through five fifty-one. Which are on pages seven through nine. There's an increase of four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, well, four hundred and forty-one, one oh two. Um, that is our special ed section. So we have an increase due to a shift from, again, the re- the um, regular ed position in Hill went to special ed at Hill. So we have an increase in the teacher education line, as well as um, some change in personnel. We have a decrease in, in sped aids for Hill, Hill School. Um, we have an increase in summer program expense. We have an increase in the contracted service line, which are lines four fifty-one. Four fifty-three and four fifty-four. And there's a slight increase in special placements. Account codes thirteen hundred, which are lines five fifty-eight, excuse me, five fifty-six through six forty-six. Which is on pages nine through ten. Um, there's a decrease of sixteen thousand, five oh two. The decrease in this section is due to a decrease in vocational tuition. Um, we're estimating less students attending. Um, and then there's an increase in the replacement equipment for workshop. The next section is account codes fourteen hundred. Those are lines four hundred and forty-six through six ninety-seven. On pages ten and eleven. There's a decrease in this section by eleven thousand, six thirty-seven. Um, the changes that occurred in this section, we have moved the athletic trainer from line six sixty-two to six fifty-seven. They net out um, minus a dollar. There's a dollar difference. Um, but just move them to a more appropriate line. We've decreased the officials, um, and we've um, decreased some replacement equipment. Account codes twenty-one hundred, lines seven hundred through eight forty-five. Those are pages eleven and thirteen. Or eleven through thirteen. There's a decrease of ten thousand, four hundred and three dollars. Uh, in this section, there were some contractual increases. Um, we had some decrease in dues. Uh, and then there was a reduction in diagnostic services, which is on line seven fifty-seven, which is part of special ed. In account codes twenty-two hundred, lines eight hundred and forty-eight through one thousand twenty-six. Pages thirteen through fifteen. There's an increase of seventy-seven thousand, six twenty-eight. In this section, there was an increase to library staff at Hill School. We had some contractual increase, increases. And then the library books, um, there's an increase in this line, but if you remember, I'm not sure if you remember, but. Um, there, the last couple of years, we've taken some books out of those lines when we've had to reduce the lines and we utilize the um, trust to cover that. So we're putting that back in um. To account for the books that we would typically purchase. And then there's a software increase as well in that section. In account codes twenty-three hundred, which are lines one thousand twenty-nine through eleven oh two, which are pages fifteen and sixteen. There's an increase of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and six. In this section, we've increased the attorney fees. Um, there's an increase to the auditor. Um, as I had mentioned at um, the SAU full board meeting, we have um, a new auditor that we've selected. So I've accounted for those dollars in this contra- uh, in this budget. The district assessment is included in this section. Um, Pembroke's valuation has increased by fifty-seven thousand dollars. And your pupils have increased from fourteen twenty-eight, excuse me, from fourteen thirteen up to fourteen twenty-eight. So that plays a role in your increase in your percentage. Your percentage for the district assessment, which can be found on page. Forty-eight of your packet. Um, your percentage is thirty-eight point nine percent. Account codes twenty-four hundred, lines eleven fifteen through twelve seventy-four, which are pages sixteen through eighteen. There's an increase of eighteen thousand, eight sixty-one. In this section, there are contractual increases. Um, there is an increase to the salary line at Three Rivers. There's an increase to other assignments to account for PyL and a math tutor. Um, we've decreased some of the maintenance contracts, and we also had a decrease in the communication, which is our um, internet service line. Account codes twenty-six hundred, which are lines twelve seventy-seven through fourteen eighty-eight. Pages eighteen to twenty-one. There's an increase of two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. In this section, again, there were contractual increases that were approved from last year. There's a ding, decrease in our water and sewer line. There's a decrease in our monthly telephone line. There's an increase for custo- custodial supplies to ho- um, cover us for additional PPE supplies moving forward. There's a decrease in our electricity. There's a decrease in our liability insurance. There's an, a slight increase in our maintenance projects. There's an increase in our heat repairs and plumbing repairs. I did forget to mention, as you're looking through this budget, we have put in a ton of uh, notes over to the um, left. So under each of the account lines, the majority of the account lines have a description of what is in, in, in the individual lines. So as you're going through, you'll be able to see um, what has been included when there are expenses attributed to that line. Account codes twenty-seven hundred, which are lines fourteen ninety-one through fifteen thirty-four, which are on page twenty-one. In this section, there's an increase of thirty-three thousand, two fifty-six. In this section, it is due to our um, transportation contract. Next year, um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, it is the fifth year of our five-year contract. So later on this year, I will be going back out to bid to see um, if there are any other vendors that would like to participate in providing services for transportation. Um, so that is the last year of that contract. That is the regular annual recruit, uh, increase. Um, that we receive on an annual basis. Um, there's also an increase in special ed transportation. Account codes twenty-nine hundred, which are lines fifteen forty-two through sixteen twenty-one, which are pages twenty-one through twenty-two. This is where you're gonna see your largest increase, um, which is a hundred and eight thousand, six twenty-four. This section includes all your fringe benefits. So as I talked about at the full SAU board meeting, um, we still have not received our health benefit rates. They did have their meeting yesterday afternoon. Um, so today, tomorrow, and early next week, they're working on rates, so I should have those by the middle of next week. In discussions that I've had um, over the last couple of months with them, they have stated that I should estimate a single um, digit percentage increase. I am estimating at this point a seven percent increase. I'm hoping it comes in lower than that. Um. But at this point, I'm not sure. I do think it's gonna be higher than five percent. Um, and I think it's gonna be lower than nine percent, so I went in the middle with that. Um, but the next time you receive this budget, you should have an update for that. So with that said, um, the other changes that uh, are attributed to this particular line. Is um, personnel changes and plan changes as well. So if I say it went up seven percent, you can't take our current. Um. Amount that we budgeted for and multiply it by seven percent, and that's not gonna be the exact number because you would have had planned changes. And we've also had personnel changes between now and then. That line is um, fifteen forty-three in your budget. The other change, um, the dental is not going to receive a percentage increase. We did receive from our vendor a zero percent, percent increase. So any changes you're seeing in that line are personnel changes. Um, your lines are decreasing um, for that particular li- um, line, but that is due to personnel changes, any planned changes that may have occurred. Um, that can be found on lines, starting on line uh, fifteen fifty-nine. We have a disability um, decrease that again is due to personnel changes. There are no rate increases. The same vendor that we receive services for, for dental is also our, our light and long-term disability vendor. Um, so there are no uh, increases across the board for those three areas. There is a very drastic increase in um. Non-cert retirement, um, in regular certified retirement. Um, as I've mentioned, the last time we had met. Um. The non-certified requi- uh, insurance, excuse me, um. Retirement is increasing from eleven point seventeen to fourteen oh six. That's for the non-certs. For the certified, it's increasing from seventeen point eight to twenty-one point oh two. Um, we, that's out of our hands. That's not something we have any control of that is designated down from the state. Um, but we did receive those. That will not affect this current year. It takes effect next year. So thankfully, we can budget for it. The other lines that are in the section are the separation of benefits. Those have not been added yet, so you're. The other lines that are in the section are the separation of benefits, those have not been added yet, so you're not going to see any numbers in there yet. I believe I had an email come through earlier today with some retirements, but I had already submitted this budget to you and I did not want to make any changes between us having the conversation tonight and when I had sent it to you. So that'll show up in your next version. The other area that is not included are any potential increases for non-certs and administration. So those still have to be provided to you, those will then go in this section. Account codes forty-six hundred through forty-nine hundred, which are lines sixteen twenty-four through sixteen thirty-nine, which is on page twenty-two. There's a decrease of one thousand five hundred and forty-three in this line. That's merely due to payment interest are decreasing in the schedule. On account codes fifty-two hundred, which are lines sixteen forty-seven through sixteen fifty, which is also on page twenty-two. There is an increase of two thousand, and that is due to food service. This line is going to change. So I made a change to, you're going to see in here when you're going through, the food service budget is not going to match what's happening in the operation budget. So I made a change in the food service budget and that change did not make it back to correlate to this budget. So I need to fix that. So the next time I see you, the food service section will be in yellow. Account codes fifty-three, fifty-three-ten, which are lines sixteen fifty-eight through sixteen sixty-one, which is on page twenty-three. There's an increase of eighteen thousand three sixteen, that is due to an increase in number of students attending Pace Academy. As I mentioned before, the food service line, which is on line sixteen sixty-eight, that number is going to change. It needs to match what the food service budget is saying, and right now it does not. Your total Fund One increase that we are proposing at this time is one point nine four percent increase. The total district appropriation, which includes your grants and your food service, as well as your Fund One, there's a two point eight, two point zero eight increase. And that's what I have for as a summary.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Quick note, just because we have ninety-one people on the call and last year, there were probably four people at the meeting where we got our first budget. So I'll just point out a little bit about how this process works. So Amber brought us this first draft, which is great. Like I said before, every subsequent school board meeting from now until the middle of December or so, at least, we will look at this. We will talk amongst ourselves as a board to try to figure out if we think this is reasonable, if there are things that we need, that we think should be increased or decreased, we'll have those conversations in public with the administrators and with Patty and with Amber. And then as we kind of narrow down our consensus on this budget, Jean and I will be taking it to the municipal budget committee and getting their opinion on it and what they would like to see to help, you know, get the tax rate to a reasonable amount. And so all of that kind of swirls together and ends up to the number that you'll see and vote on in March. So just a little bit of a overview there, if anybody's not aware. So like I said, this is the first that we're looking at this. Does anybody have any initial questions for Amber before we move on?
Andy, this is April. I'm not sure that this question is necessarily for Amber, but one thing that this board has been charged with is transparency and moving information from from one group to another. So although I understand this is a first draft, when will this first draft be shared with the chair of the budget committee so that the budget committee can begin disseminating it? Thank you.
At our last meeting, I promised Mark that the night that I got it, he would get it. So when this meeting is over, I will be sending it on to them.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Others?
Andy, this is Ann. In our full SAU meeting, Amber, you were discussing the cost of the auditors, and I know we're switching to a new company. So to find out what we paid for the last auditors, those were probably pay line ten eighty to probably ten eighty-three.
It will be in the same line, is that what you're asking, Ann?
Yeah. I was just checking, I didn't have my last year's budget with me, so I was just looking to see, you know, the cost between last year's, you know, the auditors that we used to the next one. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, in this budget that you have before you shows what we voted on for nineteen twenty and then what the actual is. So you should have that all in that one.
Yes. And then I didn't, I didn't want to go by and miss an opportunity, Andy. I did mention it at the all SAU, but the selectmen wanted to give a shout out to Amber because when Dave Joden called the state to put together our tax rate, the state told them that Amber was one of the first ones to get all the information into the state. So I really wanted to make sure that all of the Pembroke School Board heard that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Amber.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ann.
There's one thing that I wanted to point out, just again, because we have a couple of new faces on the board too, when you're looking at this this week. So Amber kind of broke down what the account codes are, and that's listed pretty clearly in the budget too. So for example, because I'm in the one thousands right now because of Ann's question, line ten twenty-eight says twenty-three-ten, school board. So all of those are oh-oh-one, twenty-three-ten, and then a bunch of other stuff. One thing to point out for anybody that might not know and might be looking at this, when you get towards the end of that big long number for each account code, there's one oh-four, one oh-five, two oh-five, and three oh-six. And Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, but the one oh-four, one oh-five are elementary school, and it was divided out because we had two of those. Two oh-five lines are for TRS and the three oh-six lines are for Pembroke Academy. So that's just a tidbit.
That's correct, yeah. And we continue to keep one oh-five in here for this year just because, but moving forward, probably next year, that will probably drop off since there's no expenses in there from the last couple of years. But yes, you are accurate.
Any other questions for Amber quickly or, you know, procedural things or how to read this or anything like that so that we can have a healthy discussion next time around?
I don't, but I just want to say thank you to Amber. It's a large task every single year.
Agreed.
Most welcome.
And this is what, one of five or six of these that you do, Amber?
Six.
Okay, so yeah, I guess just one more gentle reminder for board members, this is kind of our big task for the next couple of months. So spend some time with it, sleep with it under your pillow, whatever you want to do, but we'll have lots of discussions on this going forward. Thank you, Amber, for presenting this tonight, and we'll be talking with you a lot.
Andy, just one, could I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, we're all going to start digesting this budget right now. And if you have questions as board members, please direct them to Andy. Colate them and then send them off to Amber as one email rather than her getting bombarded by all of us.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Jean. And also, I mean, if you guys, like I said, it is, if you haven't read budgets before, I hadn't when I started this, it can be a little overwhelming. If you have questions or whatever, I may be able to answer them just because I was the one that presented this to NBC last year. So I spent a lot of time with it. Jean also has. So feel free to, you know, ask us questions as well if you have just, hey, what does this mean or whatever. But certainly, if you send something to me and I don't know the answer, I will get it to Patty and/or Amber as quickly as I can.
Andy, this is Ann. I just have one question. I'm not sure what page it's on. What bonds are we currently paying on and what's the year that they're going to be paid off?
Oh, I saw that.
I do have, I don't have the year that they're going to be paid off, but I will have, I can give you that information next time. It is, Ann, you actually have this information because it is in your binder from last year. But it's the roof bond and the honeywell bond. Those are the ones that we're talking about. So, but in your binder from last year, Ann, you should be able to find that. It will also be in the binder for the board's members this year, once we collate that for you. I just don't have that printed out in front of me right now.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. I just thought it was on one of these pages, but thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, it is included in the packets this round, but I can be sure to make sure that that gets uploaded for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, last call before we move on. Okay, then we will move on to agenda item number four, letter A, school instructional model. So Ann had asked last time that we have the reentry team come to one of our next couple of meetings. And Patty thought that it would be best to have them come next time. And because the school nurses requested a chance to speak this time. So we do have a new matrix. Patty's not here to help us go through that. I've already looked at it, I'm assuming most of you have as well. I guess I'll ask, Mr. Morris, do you have anything that you wanted to point out on there, or did Patty give you any direction to go through it? If not, I am happy to do it.
She didn't give me any direction other than, you know, as I'm sure you can see, staff absenteeism is going to, it's been a challenge and it will continue to be a growing challenge as we get through this, and I can talk a little bit more about that after the nurses.
Okay. Then I think we'll jump right in. It's all pretty tightly tied together. I don't think we need to go through questions on just the the matrix here. I think I will ask our nurses if they're on the line and let them speak and then we can kind of tackle the discussion all at once if that's okay with everybody. So I'm going to look through here.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, April.
Hi, so myself and Allison and Kathy, the nurses from Hill School and Pembroke Academy, put together a bit of data for everybody just to share in regards to contact tracing. I thought it was important that we shared with everybody tonight what we have experienced in regards to positive cases and then staff and students that have had to quarantine. So with Pembroke Academy, we have had three positive cases, and this goes back to September until today's date. With Three Rivers, we have had three positive cases as well. And Pembroke Hill School, we have had four. So cumulatively, we have had ten total cases.
Can I interrupt for one minute? Ann has dropped out of the meeting. She just texted me that she lost connection.
Thank you, Anna Pink, sorry.
You're back? All right.
Thank you.
April. April, to interrupt, we can add an additional case to Pembroke Academy as of today.
Oh, that's right, yes. So that's right, so Pembroke Academy is up to four. So cumulatively, we've had eleven positive cases for COVID. In regards to symptomatic students and staff that we have had to send home. For Pembroke Academy, we've had ninety-seven. Three Rivers School, we've had forty-three, and Pembroke Hill School, we've had fifty-six. I apologize, this is just students, not staff included, so just students.
April, could you just repeat those symptomatic numbers one more time, please?
Of course, yes. So for symptomatic students, we have had ninety-seven for Pembroke Academy, forty-three for Three Rivers School, and fifty-six for Pembroke Hill. So cumulatively, that's one hundred and ninety-six cases that we have had symptoms and requested that those students be tested. For quarantine due to traveling, we've had two for Pembroke Academy, seven for Three Rivers, and two for Pembroke Hill. So altogether, that was eleven that had to quarantine due to travel. And then quarantining due to exposure. And again, this comes from the state, so the students were contacted by DHHS that they had been exposed to someone that was positive for COVID. Pembroke Academy had fourteen, Three Rivers School had fourteen as well. Pembroke Hill School had eighteen, so cumulatively, we had forty-six students that had to quarantine due to exposure. And then in regards to opting out of the testing, so these were students who had symptoms of COVID nineteen and they or their parent opted out of testing. Those students are reported to DHHS. They are trying to keep track of those that opt out of testing and choose to quarantine. The quarantine time is ten days if that you have symptoms of COVID. Separate from the fourteen day, that's the quarantine if you're exposed. So for Pembroke Academy, there were no students that opted out of testing. For Three Rivers, we had three that opted out of testing and chose to quarantine for those ten days. And then for Pembroke Hill School, there were twenty that opted out of testing and chose to quarantine. So cumulatively, that was twenty-three that chose the quarantine versus the testing. So kind of cumulatively, what we were looking at is the amount of cases that we just had to track. So for us nurses, the state is looking at all of this data. We need to kind of track the dates that symptoms were onset, when they were tested, quarantine start date, quarantine end date. The amount of cases that the three schools in Pembroke had to track were two hundred and sixty. So that's just kind of like a bird's eye view of what we had to track in town. For staff, we sort of did the same kind of layout, and I don't know if it would be beneficial at all if I went through all of those degrees, but between the three schools, there were seventy-seven staff members that we had to track for those various reasons. So whether it was positive cases, they were symptomatic.
Could you both drop those detailed numbers real quick for the staff? I think that would be helpful.
Oh, okay, for sure. So for Pembroke Academy, there was one positive case amongst a staff member. Three Rivers and Pembroke Hill had no positive cases. For those that were symptomatic and sent for testing, Pembroke Academy had thirty-two. Three Rivers School had five. And Pembroke Hill had twelve. So altogether, that was forty-nine that were symptomatic and sent for testing among the three schools. Those that had to quarantine due to traveling outside of New England, Pembroke Academy had zero. Three Rivers School had one. Pembroke Hill had two. So cumulatively, that was just three that had to quarantine due to travel. And then quarantine due to exposure, Pembroke Academy had thirteen. Three Rivers School had four. Pembroke Hill had seven. And the total of that was twenty-four that had to quarantine due to travel. We had no staff that opted out of the testing, which was good. So again, cumulatively, the cases that we had to track amongst staff were seventy-seven. Forty-six from PA. Ten from TRS, and then twenty-one from Pembroke Hill.
Andy, this is Ann. I just had a quick question. So we had the two last charts, so we had travel, they had to quarantine due to travel. But then the last chart, was that due to exposure because they traveled?
No. Exposure is, exposure is to a positive COVID case.
So that was the last category?
Yes, so that's separate. So quarantining due to exposure is that exposure from someone that was positive with COVID versus if you travel outside of New England, you do have to quarantine for the fourteen days. The timeframe is the same, it's fourteen days either whether you travel out of New England or you're exposed. But we separated it into two separate categories.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to the uptick. I'd like to speak to the uptick in cases, um, within the state of New Hampshire. Um, if anybody has, I'm sure everyone has been observant of that fact. Um, DHHS just today has come out with information saying that we have today had the single highest day in cases thus so far since tracking has begun. Um, even as we filled out these, um, grids that April sent out to us today, um, my numbers changed from the time that I received that until I sent it back to her. And even after that, I had additional information that could have been added to this. Um, I think that it speaks volumes for what's actually going on within communities and within the state and community transmission at this time. Um, if you look at the state statistics from DHHS, we are currently above the highest level of COVID cases since COVID tracking began last spring. Um, we are above that at this point. Um, my concern as a school nurse, um, is that we are, as teachers and nurses, to keep our students safe within the population of our school system, and that that challenge is becoming increasingly difficult. I spend, and I'm sure that the other nurses can speak for their days, I spend most of my day, um, on the telephone, contacting individuals, um, parents, finding out what's going on with their student. They've called in sick, but we don't really know why they've called in sick. Finding out what their symptoms are, giving them direction on how to proceed. We also have the convenient care assessment that staff and students do daily. So anybody that does not pass that assessment needs further, um, intervention and finding out what's going on. And this is amongst, uh, students that come to our health office that may be ill or exhibiting symptoms of one nature or another. Um, and also fielding staff issues as well and questions, et cetera. I can say that as a nurse at Pembroke Academy, I have working outside of my school hours, um, quite a bit. I've spent two weekends in the last couple of weeks working with DHHS and tracking and filling out the line lists for tracing. Also during weeknights, I am putting in time as well. So it's just showing me that there's an increasing trend with the COVID virus and that it is increasing. I just want to put into place my statement that I believe at this point that we should not go full remote at any time in the near future. Um, if any recommendation I was to have at this point going into the holidays from Thanksgiving through the new year would be to go to full remote at this point for the safety of both our students and staff. I don't anticipate being able to control or have the information from our population that is consistent or truthful always in what occurs during those holiday times. I think people are very COVID fatigued. Um, I'm sure that many of us here at this meeting are. And students and staff need to travel during the holidays to see, uh, maybe loved ones that aren't doing quite so well or that they need to see that they haven't seen in, in a lot of months. Um, I've already been approached by staff regarding some of those situations. So at this point, I just have to kindly, you know, request that you consider what is going on within our communities and within our school systems to think about the safety of everybody and that maybe we consider full remote, at least for the holidays.
If I could just have you, I, I'm not sure if you misspoke or I misheard, but I thought, I thought I heard you say you would not consider full remote, but then you said, I think we should think about full remote. So I, I just wanted to make sure I understood clearly what you're saying.
No, I, we need to consider full remote going through the holidays at least. And then from Thanksgiving through the new year, possibly Martin Luther King Day. And then after that, considering back to a hybrid model, if, you know, everything is, is status quo and we don't have a huge uptick in cases at that point.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that I.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, is that, I'm not sure what all you guys have, so if you're, let, let me know if there's anything else that any of you wanted to say before I open it up to the board for questions.
Andy, uh, the only other thing I, I did want to add is that, uh, the state has asked that each of the schools in New Hampshire reports daily on absenteeism. So I just felt like that was something that maybe, um, everybody wasn't aware of in the town or amongst the school board, that daily we have to report, um, whether it's remote or in person, how many students are scheduled to be in remote or in person. Um, and then we also have to record illnesses, so whether it's influenza-like illness, which they qualify as, um, sore throat and fever, or COVID-like illness, which I think everybody knows is kind of a very broad amount of, of symptoms. Um, so we have to report those numbers daily amongst the students. And then we also have to report amongst the staff, um, how many are due to be in person and how many absences we have. And, um, in talking with Dr. Chan on our weekly calls, this is something that they're taking into consideration, um, and they're starting to track. I think a little bit, they're narrowing down on that a bit, um, mainly because they're seeing an uptick in the New Hampshire cases. And in regards to the absenteeism that plays into the matrix that the state of New Hampshire has asked that the schools follow, um, when it comes to transitioning between models. So they're asking that we answer a significant amount of questions, um, also in regards to our policies in the school with what we're doing, uh, for socially distancing, hand washing, infection control, all of those things. Um, and, and my thought on it in what we've gotten as feedback is that they're taking, um, all of this information in, looking at the cases that we have in our schools and then in our town. And they're trying to guide us a bit in the transitioning between models. So we're not alone in this. Um, I think that there should be, uh, a little bit of ease in the fact that the state is, is definitely trying to lead us, um, in regards to making that decision in what we do between models. So I thought that was something that maybe not everyone was aware of, um, that each of the schools is, is having to do. And all the schools in New Hampshire have been requested by the state to submit daily all of that information.
Awesome. Thank you both. Uh, board members, you have questions for our nurses?
Kathy, did you need to speak?
I see Kathy. Oh, she unmuted. Are you there, Kathy? I can see her.
Yeah, she's not muted, but I, we can't hear her.
I can see her again. Kathy, try turning off just video. It might be just a slow connection. Maybe if you turn video off, we'll be able to hear you better.
On the audio settings too, you might be able to pick a different microphone.
Hey, Andy, we just have to go back to the phone.
Oh, thank you. We'll do that when we're done with this budget. Do you have some emails, Sandy?
I do not.
Okay. All right, I'm not able to hear Kathy. Can anybody else hear her?
Mm-mm.
Um.
I cannot.
April, you, April, um, April Barker, do you happen to know what, what, if, if she was gonna speak or what topic she might have spoken on?
Um, I think if anything, she, she probably was gonna just discuss that, um, there's a new positive within the Hill School, and Wendy actually may be able to speak a little bit more upon that.
Uh, yeah, so, yeah, so what she's telling me that she wanted to talk about was, um, today we had a, a pretty large increase in, uh, students, uh, that were, um, on quarantine due to exposure. Um, since that chart was filled out and it's kind of been going all night, we do, we have had some increases, um, kind of with that going on. Today we did report, I sent out a one call, that we had a, a positive student case in our, um, building. We, uh, since we are full remote, which is not related to this case, um, it actually kept us from having to quarantine because we were on full remote. So no students were actually, um, exposed in the building. Um, however, as everybody's been talking about, we really need to consider, my biggest thing is the community. Uh, a lot of these kiddos out in the community are crossing paths in different places. And really, right now, that's what's driving, um, what we're doing in the background, the information that we're receiving. Um, DHHS is jumping into contact tracing on this. They're filling Kathy in as soon as they have information. Um, but it currently is making our quarantine list, uh, go up pretty quick. Um, and I know, uh, and as Kathy is saying, she, there will be more that we are reporting as they come in, as they, uh, share that information with us.
Great, thank you. Um, so board members, I guess, uh, if you have any questions for the nurses first, let's do that, and then we can discuss.
Um, Andy, this is Amy. I'd like to hear April Walker and then Kathy Mayer. If either, you know, like, I don't know if she can text Wendy or what, but, you know, do all the nurses feel the same about what, I'm sorry, Ms. Diggel, I don't know your first name, um, said in terms of feeling like remote is the best way to go from the end of Thanksgiving through the new year?
Yes. April?
April, respond. Kathy will text, uh, text me her answer.
Hi, so, um, to be honest, I, I am a little torn about, about that question. I think that there isn't necessarily a right answer. Um, I think that there's a lot of variables that come into place with this. Personally, as a mom that has two students in the Pembroke School District, um, it's a struggle going between models. Um, I think that it's very difficult for our students and our kiddos to go between any type of a model. Stability is key. Um, for my kids personally, um, their anxiety level goes a bit high when we consider going between models. Um, my nurse brain kind of pulls me in the direction of the fact that we have a significant uptick in cases. We have a significant amount of our population that feels, um, that maybe some of the restrictions and the guidelines are a bit overkill. Um, and unfortunately, whether you feel that way or not, the guidelines still push us to quarantine um, with exposure. Um, and then if we are positive, obviously, we have to isolate and have all of our close contacts quarantined. With that being said, that puts a significant number on remote learning. Um, those of us that have to quarantine, um, have to go in that remote mindset. So it's a matter of being proactive or reactive. I think that at any given point, we're gonna have to go remote because we have a significant amount of students and staff that are having to quarantine. Um, so planning, for me, like, if we can plan this out, it, it puts us in kind of a better mindset of being able to get to daycare, be able to, to kind of focus on our educational plans. Um, but having like a solid answer of what we should do, I am still struggling with myself, to be honest.
I would like to add, um, to April's answer in the respect that what I'm seeing so far, based on evidence-based practice in my years of nursing, I have to say that I am very much a proponent of being proactive and not reactive in this particular, um, timeframe that we're looking at. The holidays present a huge, uh, difficulty for both, you know, for all, I should say, families, students, et cetera. Um, we are not going to be able to control family gatherings, although it's recommended that we have smaller gatherings. People are extremely COVID tired. I hear this day in, day out from both staff, students, and people in the community. Uh, it is difficult for, uh, you know, anybody who has perhaps an elderly parent, uh, family member that they haven't seen in an extensive amount of time to say that they are not going to see them through the holidays. I've had staff approach me, um, indicating that they're going to choose to travel to see that relative that they need to see. Um, when it comes down to making decisions of such nature, I can fully understand why someone would choose to take the risk to go see a family member. And I don't believe that we are going to be able to have everyone be truthful. I would like to believe that that was the case, but I, I can, I'm a realist and I don't believe that. Um, people are going to be together for these holidays. This is our first time with the COVID in our society that we are facing holidays. This is an enormous obstacle ahead of all of us. I really feel that being proactive, having a plan, is extremely important in this case. And I don't believe in being reactive. We can decide not to do anything and stay in our current model. But I do believe very significantly based on the data that we have at this point that we will be in full remote whether we want to be or not.
I can jump in. Yep, um, so Kathy is in, uh, support of remote. A lot of it has to do with, um, consistency. We currently are remote. Um, and like I said, our backlogs are, 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 they're expanding right now as, um, we talk, um, the consistency piece is a big one because the trend right now is looking like if it's a hybrid model, we're gonna be in and out. In hybrid, then to remote, in hybrid, then to remote. Um, so that is a big worry. I can, you know, I'll talk a little bit more, um, when we talk about, through the principals. Um, the other piece that Kathy is, is concerned about is that travel piece. Um, we've had, you know, we, we talked to staff about it as well, but I think there is a larger concern is, uh, about families um, and making sure that, um, there, they would be, you know, forthcoming and, and tell us that they were traveling. Um, and then those, those gatherings as well, um, were, were a concern for Kathy.
Thank you. Other questions?
Andy, this is April. Um, I'm just seeking clarification. I'm not sure, did I just hear Ms. Gary say that backlogs are expanding as we talk? And if that is what she said, what is meant by backlogs? Thank you.
Sorry, um, our quarantine list, um, today alone, it has, um, doubled from what we had this morning up until now. And we're current, we are getting more names, um, very regularly.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that clarification.
Um, Andy, this, this is Anne. Um, when we, um, are in full remote, um, like Ms. Gary just said, for the Hill, um, do we still have cohort A and B when we're in remote?
I can talk specifically to Hill. Um, we do have, currently have cohort A and B. Um, a lot of that for us was planned around the understanding that a lot of our students, um, as the little ones are in and many parents are not necessarily prepared or have this set up to be able to have them live full time all four days. Um, so that's currently what we have. They do have access to their teachers every day through our learning labs. Um, and then if we were to go full remote for a longer period of time, we would absolutely take a look at, um, what that model would look like. But right now, it mimics our current schedule because we understand that our students are, uh, childcare is a big issue and they have the ability on some days to provide, um, live instruction. But on other days, they're, they're with somebody else.
Thank you. Andy, can we hear from the, um, from all the principals concerning going remote from now till Martin Luther King Day?
Sure, um, I guess Wendy, since we've been talking with you already, why don't you go ahead and start?
Okay, um, so I actually, we had kind of already discussed this. I didn't know if Dan wanted to. Okay, um, so I actually, we had kind of already discussed this. I didn't know if Dan wanted to. We've put together some thoughts. If Dan wanted to jump in and kind of give our overarching discussion?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, I think hybrid has worked well for us thus far. And if our current context were to continue, we would be able to continue with hybrid, but that context is changing. And the trends are creating a forecast for us that I think becomes very challenging for us to provide a consistent model moving forward. So if we were to continue with hybrid, given what the nurses outlined from a medical perspective, we're probably looking at more interruptions, similar to what Hill School's going through right now and what Pembroke Academy went through with contact tracing for two days last week. And those interruptions are likely going to occur with greater frequency. And so it's not necessarily just that, you know, we may have an infected or, you know, a student or a staff member with a positive test, but we just may not have enough people to staff a building. And part of that is because of our, you know, we have, like, for instance, with Hill out, you know, at Pembroke Academy, we have a number of staff members that are also community members with students at Hill. And so that creates a strain on us. I know that we have childcare issues that are starting to crop up. And with quarantine rules being what they are, it becomes more and more challenging for us to find coverage. So for instance, this afternoon, we had, in the last block of the day, we had six staff members that we needed coverage for, and we only have three substitutes. And they come every day, and I am so nice to those three people, and they continue to come. But it is going to become more and more of a challenge. Adding to that, you know, when we're talking about travel quarantine for students, that becomes difficult. And then we also have that challenge for staff members. Now, the Commissioner of Education has said that we can designate teachers as essential employees, and then the travel quarantine doesn't apply to them, and they can go to work at school, and then they go home and they quarantine at home. Patty and Colleen, our HR specialists, don't recommend using that designation as essential employees. And quite frankly, if, if we have a law for safety, but then that law becomes too onerous, or that guideline becomes too onerous, and we circumvent it, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me either. But anyway, they can talk more about why that's not, not what they would want to do in terms of the designation of essential employee status. So if the trend continues, the only way that I can see us providing a consistent educational model that is predictable and provides the greatest safety for our students and staff, it would be to move to a remote model, and that would be, you know, and I, I struggle with that, but you know, it's, we're going to be in and out, and in and out, and in and out, particularly through cold and flu season where those symptoms are very similar to COVID, and that means that we're quarantining until test results come back. And so that's pretty challenging, too. So, you know, we, we can certainly try, but I just want to say, you know, for transparency standpoint, it's going to be challenging for us to do, to offer a consistent model if we continue in hybrid in this current context.
Thank you. If I could ask just one quick question. I'm wondering about timeline here. So the board had, had made a decision basically up until Thanksgiving break. I think what I'm hearing is, is there's a feeling to maybe look at beyond that now and into the middle of January. In the past, when we've had these conversations, a couple of times, we may have acted too quickly. We got significant community feedback. I'd like to avoid having to, you know, reconsider questions if at all possible. My thought is that having a week and a half since our next board meeting is not even a full two weeks away, that I would like to have the chance for the community to reach out, maybe get some input from Patty at the next meeting. Let all of us kind of chew on this. In your opinion, with all that said, would a decision on the 17th of November at our next meeting, would, would that be too late as far as your planning, the principal's planning, as well as your opinion on the amount of time we're giving parents, community members to plan for their families? Or do you think that would be a reasonable approach?
Well, yeah, I think that would be reasonable. I mean, it's certainly a significant decision and, you know, not unlike, you know, the decision that you guys were facing back in late July and August. And so having that time to solicit input, I think would be important. You know, it's, again, that planning is going to be critical. And that's another reason why, you know, having a model that's predictable, I think, makes the most sense for, for families.
I see your hand. Go ahead.
Oh, you're on mute, Allison.
There. Sorry about that. I just wanted to tag on to Dan's comment about staffing. I just, I didn't know if the board is aware that as nurses, at least in my particular school, but I'm pretty sure that it exists amongst the others as well, we do not have any subs for our positions. So should myself or a family member become ill and I need to be out of the building, that has an enormous impact on the facility and its ability to stay open. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there so that you understood that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Well, thank you to the nurses. Is there any other discussion amongst boards, amongst board members as far as when you want to, when you want to take action on this, or any other things that you might, you know, information you might want to gather to help you make a decision? Or are we okay?
If Mr. Marson or Jerry had anything further to say on this issue?
Sure.
I wasn't sure if Mr. Morris was making like a collective recommendation on behalf of everybody.
Certainly. Wendy, do you want to jump in? Because I can see you. I feel like we've let John off pretty light tonight, though, so.
It's okay. I gotta make it up for him, make it up to him. So I, you know, we've all wrangled with this discussion. And, and the last couple days at Hill School in particular have really brought to light some of the challenges that happens when you're moving from model to model. So one of the, you know, the biggest ones, I'm looking at it as a parent and as a staff perspective. I had a parent concern was definitely that switch really quick to childcare. What do I do? I heard Boys and Girls Clubs, the phone lit up. So having that switch real quick, we had at least that Tuesday to allow for some form of, you know, a little bit of time. But that's a huge concern. And then on the staff side is this planning piece. So if they get a call very early in the morning or even late at night, they have had no chance to plan. And I think especially what's, what's really different for the elementary is there's a lot of like hands-on work or manipulative type work that's prepped for the day before. It's not an easy switch from in-person learning to remote. So it takes a lot of time. That's why, in particular, the schedule that we put out this week was that Wednesday was an asynchronous day with check-ins because the staff had never done this before. And I wanted to ensure that they had time to prep for their live lessons. I don't anticipate doing that if we had to go remote again, but understanding that that switch is a dramatic switch for us. Our remote, our full remote team, they do an enormous amount of planning and they prep very far ahead, and they send materials home to families for, at two weeks at a time. So piece is a big portion of how do we ensure that kids have a consistent educational model is one of the things that I really struggle with. Hybrid model right now and the trends, especially in the past couple days, have shown me, and we're living it and feeling it right now, that we're going to be in and out. It pains me to say that just going full remote for that long period of time, because we understand the connection is so important, I can guarantee that consistency. If you have students that are on quarantine right now, they're missing out on the live instruction from their teachers because their teachers have, they're, if they're in a hybrid model, are working full in with a class. We don't remote into that classroom. So we have check-ins and work that's, that's assigned to them, but they are missing that piece. And with our staffing, we're not able to provide full remote instruction. They can't just jump to our remote class. It's a completely different atmosphere. We've set up, you know, a pretty solid remote environment. So, but if in a full remote model, we would be able, if a child or anybody had to go on quarantine, you wouldn't know. They would just join the classes as usual. So really, when you're looking at it, as far as we want the kids in front of us, we see that as an inconsistent model. With remote, we see it as consistent. I, you know, I, I do feel like feedback from, from all stakeholders would be important with it. And I know, you know, Dan shared a little bit about that, even staff, community members, parents, everybody as well. But as I've worked through it, as a leadership team, part of a leadership team, that's where I've kind of fallen on the thoughts of after the holidays, because there will be a lot of, the increase right now, it's just, it's, it's pretty big.
Thank you. John, would you like to add on?
Yeah, I'm not sure how much I can add. I, I do feel that every day, we're, we're just waiting for the, the house of cards to fall down. And when you see the amount of COVID cases, not just in New Hampshire, but in Pembroke, certainly increasing, and it's, it's increasing as we're having this meeting. And it makes it quite a challenge to try to provide any consistency. I, I feel like we are a phone call away from shutting down every single day. All the weekend comes, and I know, you know, I'm waiting for that phone call that, that we have to, you know, somebody's infected, and we've got to do the contact tracing, which is all well and good. But eventually, I agree with both Dan and Wendy, that, that consistency in a stable environment is, is really important. And we wouldn't, I don't think we'd have it. It just feels like, you know, we could get the call tomorrow morning. I can give you an example of a staff member that got a call at 6:30 in the morning, and said, you have to stay home because his child's school went into full remote at 6:30 in the morning. You know, then they're back two days after because they did their contact tracing. That puts a lot of stress on a lot of families. And if we had a plan that was consistent and stable, in the end, I think that feels better. Having said that, you know, what we're doing now with hybrids certainly seems to be working the kinks out. And, you know, that's beginning to feel better, even though we, we plan multiple things. Each teacher has to plan multiple things, multiple styles. It's really going to be challenging if we're, you know, we've already seen it in both other schools. So far, Three Rivers has not been affected like that, but in and out is incredibly challenging for everybody involved. It's not an easy decision, and it's not one that we should take lightly. And it's also something that we should not jump at too soon. I do think feedback is important. However, having said that, I want to give staff enough time to be able to plan also, because that will be critical in making this successful. To answer something that Anne had asked, Anne, if we went to full remote, we would be like what we did in the first two weeks where we would, our A and B groups would combine, and we would be four days a week of a modified schedule, which in, in an odd way, we'd have more contact with kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marson.
I can answer, Anne.
Hey, Andy.
Sorry?
We would, at Pembroke Academy, we would also combine the cohorts. We would have those four days very similar to the first two weeks of school. And so we would just model it in that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or discussion?
Andy, this is Anne. I'm not sure if this is a place to ask this, but I had a resident come up to me at the elections the other day. They're not going to be able to stay home with their child or their, and they have three of them. The oldest one is 11. They're not able to stay home. What's going to be the situation where their first, second graders are not able to remote in because their 11-year-old is, is doing her work, but the parents can't stay home that day or any of these days? So the 11-year-old will be hopefully trying to do her work, but the, the first and second grade can't. What kind of situation does the parent be proactive in letting the principals know? Do the children in the first and second grade have to unenroll?
I guess, Wendy, do you want to tackle that for the, the young kiddos that have childcare issues or can't get online during the day? Is there a recommendation or should they reach out to you directly or?
Yeah, I've always asked anybody who has a particular circumstance to reach out to us directly. I can tell you currently that our remote attendance, we do track live sessions as if you are present in the classroom. But like I said, we know that this is an undue burden on parents. And if, if there is something that we can do, we've really worked to support everybody the best way that we can. There's a lot of things that we can put into place. So I would always recommend on their individual circumstances, please reach out to me directly, and we can talk about it that way.
Thank you.
Other questions?
This is, this is Amy.
Go ahead.
Because the administrators are saying that it's fine and enough lead-up time to make a decision at our next board meeting. I'm fine with that. But I want us to be ready to make a decision at our next board meeting. I mean, I'm leaning towards accepting what I'm hearing is a pretty strong recommendation from the administration and the nurses to go fully remote from after the Thanksgiving break through to Martin Luther King Day, or Civil Rights Day. I forget what it's called here. But I just want to make sure that we take a moment to assess whether there's any additional information that we might need. You know, I don't want to get to the next meeting and figure out like, oh, nuts. You know, we, we can't make a decision because we don't have this critical piece of information. So I just wanted to throw that out there. If there's any board member that feels like they don't have enough information, we should address that today.
Yeah, and I kind of piggybacking on that, Amy, I guess I would say, and I was going to bring this up at Board Reports, but maybe, maybe an email to Carl or whoever you've been contacting as far as the AREA schools, since this would, this would impact Pembroke Academy. I certainly, you know, not to imply that, that they're going to make this decision for us, but it certainly sounds like something that they would want to be in the loop on at least. And I guess if you get any strong feedback, one way or the other, we could certainly invite them to give us some input at our next meeting if they, if they would like to do that.
Yep. I can, I can share that communication with them.
All right. John, is that a hand?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Jean.
Hold on. Go ahead, Jean, and then we'll get to Mr. Marson.
Oh, I'm sorry. If John wants to speak, that's fine.
Okay.
I was just going to say, the next couple weeks, you know, nurses are doing an awesome job of tracking all these symptoms and quarantining and all that stuff. So I think we're going to see data that will help make that decision. And I think that will clear it up for us even more, to be honest with you. But I do think having that more data, seems like we got a lot now, but I think we're going to see a change that will be, make, make our decision a little bit clearer.
Basically, I'm in agreement with Amy. My daughter's in college. She goes, as soon as they start for Thanksgiving break, she's fully remote until they go back for second semester. It seems logical because they know that students are going home. They're going to travel outside the area, be with family and friends that they haven't been with for a long time, and to go right back after Thanksgiving could adversely impact, you know, the, the in-person learning. The other thing, I'd be totally honest, I believe that there will be people that will travel and will not be honest about it, and will not follow the protocols. So I'm strongly leaning, I, I've said this before, a few days for these kids in school is better than them being remote. But with them having to go back and forth, or possibly completely losing hybrid altogether, I think it warrants us taking a serious look at, yes, going remote from the Thanksgiving break all the way to what, Martin Luther King Day, whatever that date might be. And mainly, you know, I think the majority of people will be honest and, and adhere to the And mainly, you know, I, I think the majority of people will be honest and, and adhere to the, um, the quarantine recommendations, but it doesn't, it just takes one. And I don't, uh, it, I believe that will happen. So, you know, looking forward to our next meeting. This is something we all should consider. It's not about how we feel about COVID. It's about what we have to do to, as a school board, as a school district, to educate our kids. So something we should all think long and hard about in the next week and a half.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I like John's point about, you know, waiting till the next meeting. It gives us another almost two weeks of, of data, which is great. Definitely gives us some time to hear from the community as well. Um, and you know, I tend to be a trust the experts kind of guy. And in this situation, I think our school nurses are our experts. Um, and I think their feelings are pretty clear. But I guess the big softie in me too is still kind of hoping against hope that maybe, um, the end of this school year could possibly not be as bad as the end of last school year was. And i- if there's still a glimmer of hope that, that some of these kids can have a more normal end of the year with whatever, you know, the dances and, and the, the things that happened at the end of the school year. I, I think that maybe having them remote at this hard time of the holidays and, uh, you know, people's immune system is generally weaker in the winter and all that stuff. If we can keep the numbers lower through this season, maybe it helps them get back some of that stuff at the end of the year that they may otherwise lose. I don't know. I don't know if that's even realistic. But, um, if, if we have a chance to preserve some of that for these students, that would be awesome, too. Ann or April, I don't think we've heard your full thoughts. If you want to, if you don't want to, that's fine, too, but I want to give you the opportunity.
This is April. Um, I think it's a good idea to wait until our next meeting. So we give not only our superintendent an opportunity to weigh in, but also the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Patty, this is Ann. Um, I also feel, you know, waiting to the next meeting. So we do have more input, but um, I do want to acknowledge from the principals and all the nurses that, you know, it is a tough situation for everyone and it is a lot of work on the teachers, the staff, the admin, and also the nurses just to keep them, the doors open so far.
Absolutely. Okay. Um, well, if nobody else has any quick questions or any other thoughts, um, I'll, I'll give you a second and then we'll move on. Okay. Um, I guess, I guess this is a good enough time as any to throw in a reminder, um, because this is probably a topic that a lot of people will have opinions on. So, um, staff members, please try to, you know, keep that policy in mind and send things to Patty and she's done a good job of getting them to us so far. Um, community members, absolutely feel free to reach out to any of us. Um, and sometimes when things like this happen, we get a little bit bombarded. So I will speak for myself. If, if you don't get a response, be assured that I am reading your emails and, and reading them carefully and probably reading them more than once. Um, but there have been a couple of topics in the past six months that I just certainly did not have the time to respond to every single email. So I apologize in advance if you don't get a response from me, but be sure that I am reading everything that I get. I've been taking it into account. Um, so with that, I suppose we will move on to four B, which is the Pittsfield tuition request update. So to bring the public up to speed on that, in case anybody wasn't at the prior meeting, we got a very vague, um, kind of letter from Pittsfield, gauging our appetite to accept Pittsfield students to come to PA at some undetermined time in the future. Um, and I think Mr. Morris let us know that Pittsfield sent that out to multiple school districts. So it was not just a targeted thing, um, to Pembroke, but it sounds like they're, they're exploring their options for what to do, um, with their high school kids. So we do have a letter in our drive and it's short enough that I think I'll just go ahead and read it. So the public knows what we're looking at also. Um, we had asked Patty to kind of reach back out and see if they wanted to attend one of our board meetings or give us some more information. Um, I think I did hear that they, they have a board meeting tonight. So they, they were unable to attend this one. Um, but I'll go ahead and read this letter that she got in response. Anyway, it says, Dear Dr. Sherman, thank you for your interest in tuitioning Pittsfield High School students. We formed a tuition study committee on October seventh and have had two productive meetings. We have formed several subcommittees, uh, budget facilities, Pittsburgh, or sorry, Pittsfield course offerings, district contracts and offerings provided by receiving schools. Prior to receiving or hosting visits or meetings, the committee would like to compile and organize this data to, I think it's supposed to say make, there's a typo there, a preliminary report to the Pittsfield School Board. I would appreciate it if you would please send me your course and co-curricular offerings for Pembroke Academy. I thank you for your attention to this matter. Respectfully, John Graziagano, Interim Superintendent of Schools. Um, so not a ton there to go off of. I, I'm not, if anybody's got anything that they want to chime in, certainly, that'd be great, but I think that this is kind of still just a little bit of a back and forth. Um, I assume that Patty will send them the things that they've asked for, if she has not already. Um, and since Patty's not really here to fill us in, I don't know how much of a discussion we can have. But if board members have anything that they would like to ask or get on the record with Sandy to remember to ask Patty when, when she's back with us, uh, we can do that.
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. I would just ask, you know, that Patty does respond to the letter with that information. Um, i- if it's something that she's readily available, um, only because, you know, if a different community reached out to us, we still would just do a, a, a response.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything to contribute on this one? Okay, we'll move on then. Um, a new four C we added at the beginning under Agenda Review and, um, wanted to discuss voting at Pembroke Academy. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think that there was general consensus from the sending schools that the March meetings or the March voting this year was okay. Um, is that right? I guess I can't remember for sure.
Um, this is Amy. I don't know that we have that input, but I'd like to make a motion to allow March elections to be held at Pembroke Academy, but this would only pertain to March twenty twenty-one. I don't want to, um, so that's the end of my motion. Uh, I don't want to go any farther than that because the AREA thing that was previously scheduled to happen where we could get some input on this has now been pushed off to December. And I think that's too late to, um, for planning purposes for our March twenty twenty-one elections. So I want us to go ahead and make that plan now. Um, but for like a permanent, long-term solution, I still would like to afford the AREA committee some, um, opportunity to comment.
Uh, this is Ann. I will second.
All right, discussion. And, and I want to give you the floor for a minute at some point to, just because you're the one that put the agenda item on there, but I, if you want to do that now, that's fine. If you want to wait until after the motion, that's fine, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Um, yeah, I just want to, uh, thank you, Amy. Um, it does take a few months to get to any election organized and, um, as many people saw on Tuesday, how smooth it ran because we had the extra space. We were allowed to social distance. Um, it was just incredible. We had four thousand three hundred and thirty-two ballots cast. We did have one thousand five hundred of them as absentee, but we had over thirty volunteers coming in and helping us complete this task. So um, Jim Goff was extremely grateful that we were able to use Pembroke Academy. And a lot of residents were grateful that we were able to keep them at, at a distance. And even times, I believe Jean came in closer to the end, you know, after work and there was no lines. We are extremely grateful.
Yeah, I think even just the, the sole fact that you could go in one door and out the other made it very smooth. That was, that was awesome. I think I saw a lot of positive, um, feedback on Facebook and stuff, too. The town did an excellent job, in my opinion. Uh, Mr. Morris, I see a hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, we do have a, um, an SAUPD day during that March voting, but we can, you know, we have discussed it and we can facilitate that without impacting votes. So those two things can run simultaneously. I mean, the one caveat moving forward, and I understand this motion is just for March, but it's really problematic to have students in the building when there is an election. Um, but I know that's not the case for this one, but just in general.
Is that, uh, and I think you've mentioned that before, Dan. Is that something, I know that there's certain, um, PD days and things on the calendar that are very consistent year to year. Um, I don't, I, I guess I can't remember when the dates for the March meetings are always set, but is it, would it be feasible maybe to, to plan? And again, this is outside the current motion, but, um, would it be, would it be possible to, to look at scheduling that PD day for same time every year? Would that be?
Yeah, it traditionally is. It's traditionally scheduled, uh, for the March voting for that reason.
Oh, perfect. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Um, Amy's got a motion on the table and it has been seconded to approve PA to be used for the March twenty twenty-one elections. Any other discussion before we call that?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to add for the March meeting that we would only have to be able to use the, um, the gymnasium. We would not have to use the cafeteria. Um, obviously we have to use the hallways, but the amount of people are probably voting would be under four hundred. So we would have enough room to social distance, only using the gymnasium. We wouldn't have to impact the cafeteria this time. And I do know in March, the students are out this time, but, um, like Mr. Moore said, you know, if they have other needs for that cafeteria during that time.
Great. Okay, um, the question on the roll call vote to approve the use of Pembroke Academy for the March twenty twenty-one elections. Um, I'll start with Jean.
Yes.
Ann? I think that was yes. I'm sorry, I missed half of it.
I'm sorry, yes. Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes, so the motion carries. Um, Ann, was there anything else that you wanted to get, uh, wanted to talk about with regards to this tonight?
Oh, I just wanted to also thank, we had, uh, you know, a lot of the scouts that were there volunteering. We did have a lot of students coming in, high school students, getting their volunteer hours. Um, they were, um, punctual. They were on time. They were very respectful. Uh, a really shout out to our, our Pembroke students. They, everyone complimented them and they, whatever tasks they were given, they stepped right up. So, thank you.
Awesome. All right. Um, yeah, I guess just Amy, keep that on the agenda or the topic of conversation as far as the AREA schools to, to look to the future. And we'll move on to what is now four D on our agendas, the board reports. Um, so first is Ann with SAU Exec Board.
Thank you. Yeah, the next meeting for the Exec Board, um, was also pushed out to December. Um, but we did have the, um, the full SAU exec, uh, the Exec Board and also the full SAU, um, coming in to meet and go over the budget. They did approve the SAU budget. Amber was there to give us information concerning the new auditors and the RFP that was sent out and the reason why we needed the new auditors. So that was presented. Um, and Amber, I apologize, the prior auditors, they, they get done with the year seventeen eighteen?
Yes, the last, um, audit that they have completed was seventeen eighteen.
Oh, okay. And they terminated their contract or did we have to?
So they were in, they had finished the three-year part of their contract and we were moving into the ability to extend them for two additional years. And so they had reached out to me and proposed increase in rates to their contract. So I halted them and said, well, wait a minute. In the proposal that you submitted back when you did the RFP, you proposed ra- rates at that point in time and they're differing than the ones you're proposing now. And they were substantially higher. Um, and so their response back was that they didn't realize how big and how much work it took to complete our audits. Um, so that was one thing. Um, so that was one part of the discussion. Um, and then shortly after that, we had kind of gone back and forth. And then shortly after that, they had stated that, um, their workload really did not, um, our districts really didn't fit into their workload. And so with that in the way we were kind of feeling, we thought it was time to move on. So we did put out another RFP. I put it in the paper. I posted it on the website. I reached out to I think it was like five or six different vendors, um, throughout the state that deals, you know, with municipality and school districts. Um, and we re- and I did have a couple vendors reach out to me. Um, any conversations that I had with them, I posted the questions and my responses on the website so that everybody had equal opportunity and all heard the same information. Um, and then in the end, only one dis- um, one, um, vendor ended up submitting a proposal. While I would have liked to have seen more, I was very comfortable with the um, vendor that submitted a proposal because this particular vendor works throughout our state with a lot of school districts and I have heard a lot of positive feedback from my colleagues.
Thank you, Amber. So we don't have eighteen and nineteen. The, is the new vendors will do the year eighteen nineteen?
They will. Um, we had already submitted, um, much of our information to, um, our auditor in regards to eighteen nineteen. They were supposed to have been working hand in hand on both years, but I guess that did not happen. Um, so eighteen nineteen hadn't even begun. So, uh, when the new auditor comes in, they will have to do eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty. From my understanding, I still have to have conversation with them. To be honest, I've been so busy, I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to them yet. Um, but from my understanding and conversation that I had with them, um, they believe that they will be able to, if my understanding is correct, um, be able to perform both audits, I think simultaneously. I think they have enough staff where they're going to be able to get both of those done in the same year. Um, so they were very clear with me in conversation that they could get us caught up to where we need to be. Now, this isn't, we are delayed in audits, but it is not solely because of the auditor we have now. It is because of the previous auditor that was substantially behind. So, you know, our auditor was playing catch-up and I think it was honestly just too much.
Thank you, Amber. And, um, a lot of the, um, other attendees for the, um, for the budget discussion was this auditor has a, um, a, a outstanding reputation.
Yes.
Yeah, and, um, that's all I had.
Okay. Um, the AREA Committee, uh, Amy, I think you said there hasn't been another meeting since the last time we met. Is that correct?
And there won't be another one until, I believe it's December ten.
Okay. Good enough. Um, Budget Committee, so we haven't met either. The next scheduled meeting is, um, eleven nineteen. Um, I did actually already send the budget that we received tonight to David and to Mark LaPage, who's Chair of Budget Committee this year. So they've got that and I asked them to distribute it to um, the members and let them know that it is a rough draft, obviously. Um, and this is not either one of their first rodeo, so I'm sure they understand that anyway. Um, but nothing to report from the Budget Committee other than that. Uh, Jean, anything from Pace?
Uh, nothing yet. Uh, next meeting is November sixteenth, right, Amy? So, yeah, November sixteen.
Next time.
All right. Um, I'm not sure if Mr., Kevin Foss is on. Um, I'm not sure if he's got an update for us, but Mr. Morris, if you don't mind unmuting Kevin, we'll see if he, I know he had said they were going to meet. Kevin, you're unmuted if you've, if you've got anything for us.
Yeah, um, I'll keep it quick. We met last week. We're meeting again next week and, uh, we're in the process of wrapping up. Outside of that, not much news since I talked to you last.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And last but not least is the Principals Reports. The Principals have got more airtime tonight than they usually do. Um, Mr. Morris, I suppose. We'll start with you.
Thank you. Um, you know, I just want to talk a little bit and, uh, really praise our nurse and, uh, Allison Diggle and our nurse's assistant, Katie Russell. We had a COVID-related event last week. Uh, we did have to, uh, go remote for two days and, and we had to perform contact tracing during those two days. And that's a very tedious process uh, that requires a lot of collaboration with DHHS. uh, as well as cross referencing a lot of records and attendance and, and, uh, even camera footage for that matter. And, uh, she and Katie were great the entire time. And, and when she's talking about how hard she's working, she's really kind of underselling it. She's doing a tremendous job and it's been, uh, really, um, nice to know that that particular aspect of the school is in good hands with Allison and Katie.
Awesome. Thanks. Um, we'll go through everybody and then we'll do questions at the end. So I will go to Mr. Marson.
Uh, we've had a few things going on at Three Rivers. Are the SAS testing is completed and, uh, that was pretty interesting. We started having to do kids remotely. Uh, it's quite a challenge. Our phys ed department also did, uh, we, we typically have fall relays and we obviously were not able to do them the same way. However, they did figure it out and we did have last week, we had, uh, 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 fall relays, uh, during phys ed and unified arts classes that were, I think a hit, uh, even though they weren't quite as, uh, uh, robust as we've done in the past. So that was nice that they were able to do that. We finished up picture day today. Uh, we had, uh, it was pretty interesting. Usually we have, you know, quite a, quite a few lines going, but it went relatively fast. Last two days, we were able to get everybody's pictures done, uh, in the last two mornings by 11 o'clock. So that was, that was great. Our fall teams have finished up. Uh, so we actually made it through a season, two soccer teams and a cross country team. And I think all had fun. Um, we are also, we always have a book fair every year, um, and it's always in person. Well, we're not going to do that this year, but we will have a virtual book, book, uh, fair, but we'll see how that turns out. So stay tuned for more information on that. Um, I do want to hit one more time on, uh, and I know I'm going to be beating the dead horse here, but the, uh, the hybrid is beginning to work. And I would, I don't know if I should say work, but we're feeling more successful with it. Um, I do have to point out though, and I still will continue that, um, having, uh, staff, we're really struggling with absenteeism and work completion from students. And I do believe some of it's because we have so many different, uh, options for kids between remote, uh, in person and independent days. And we're just really, uh, having to figure those pieces out. But I think it's important to note that having, um, giving so many options to, uh, learning models is still an issue, um, and will continue to be. But, um, I think it's important to go on record as saying so. But that's it from Three Rivers.
Thank you. And Ms. Gary.
Um, so this week has, has definitely been, um, a challenge for us, but I, I cannot express, um, how just proud I am of the staff at Hill School, um, for jumping in this week. So it, it was just, you know, when you get that call and you go full remote and you get into this realm of remote teaching and how am I going to keep my kinders and my, you know, my littles engaged in all of this? And I'm just, I'm really proud of for all the hard work that they've done and the support they've given each other has just been amazing through this. I, I asked for them to share some feedback after their first day and, you know, to get some of these emails saying that they felt like it was a success. Um, we have our challenges. It doesn't go, you know, without saying that there's challenges. Um, but even that we could see some of those happy moments, I think to, to me, um, or to have that feeling of success was, was pretty powerful. Um, we are also very excited because our internet was fully upgraded. So we were, did not break the internet today. I cannot tell you how good it feels that we can get every single person on the internet. Um, so it was at the silver linings of this for us, um, and being able to see the kiddos, um, and, and just knowing that if we have to go remote, we can do it. Um, and I'm just beyond proud of them. Um, and I, again, I want to shout out also to, to Kathy Mayer. Um, they do, they work constantly. They, it's every weekend at night. We're going back and forth with it. It's a never ending job this year. Um, so I think it really is important. Um, I feel very confident, um, that she has the safety of the kids, you know, at, at, at the forefront of everything and all the decisions that she makes and, um, things like that. So I'm just, again, Hill staff, everybody super proud.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, and, uh, with that, I'll open it to questions from the board.
Andy, this is Amy. I have a question, um, maybe for the administrators, maybe for the board, but it relates to my earlier comment about, do we have all the information we need to make a vote about the method of instruction at the next board meeting? And as I was, um, hearing about the relays and thinking about my fifth grade student who did the relays and, you know, it was great and the closing up of some of the sports seasons. You know, we might want to start thinking tonight about if we are going to vote to go remote, what that does or does not mean for sports seasons. You know, um, I, I don't know that that's information that we have right now, or maybe there's an automatic assumption that that means no sports, you know, I, I don't really know. But that just struck me as, um, you know, something we ought to consider, either at the same time we consider this issue at the next meeting or at the following meeting. And so I just wanted to flag that. And, um, you know, I welcome anyone's thoughts on that.
Sorry. I was just going to say, um, I was just going to say, I don't have any particular thoughts, but I did take a note, um, to ask Patty if Mr. Vazina could join us next time, give us a little bit of input on that. Go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, ask the same thing that Amy did because I know when Bo had to go remote, um, they weren't allowed to do sports and that did take them out of the, the playoffs. So that was my question also, Amy, on, you know, how that would look. Thank you.
Mr. Morris has his hand up.
Uh, I can talk a little bit about that. Cause we had a similar situation when we, uh, had to go remote last week where unfortunately that, um, represented the end of the boys soccer season because we had to forfeit that playoff game. And that's a similar situation to what Bo had to do. Um, I think what's different between going remote in that scenario and going remote, um, in a planned kind of proactive manner is, um, you know, in Bo's case and in our case last week, we had to go remote because we had to perform contact tracing because there was a potential exposure in our building. And, um, if we were remote for an extended period of time, as we talked about earlier, um, that's not necessarily because there's an exposure. Uh, that is, uh, because we're trying to prevent exposures in the building and, you know, trying to navigate not being able to staff the building for supervision for, uh, kids in it. So it's a little different in that way. Um, I, you know, I think it's a good idea to have Freddie at the next one, Fred Vazina. Um, but I think that there is a way that we could do it and I think that it would actually help us because, you know, frankly, we had a playoff soccer game for our girls today and it took one visit from the nurse to say, we, we may have a potential exposure and we're going to have to go remote for us to forfeit that season. Now unfortunately they did lose, but it, it's that easy for that to slip away, uh, in this situation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Andy, I did have a question, um, from Mr. Morris. When you were saying, um, even cameras had to be used for contact tracing? What does that mean?
Well, we have a lot of, uh, camera coverage in, uh, the cafeteria hallways. And, um, you know, we needed to access those to determine if there was exposure, uh, like during lunch or during passing time in, uh, between classes. Uh, and we also had to do that for arrival and dismissal. And that's a very time consuming process. As, as you can imagine, when you have kids coming into the building, it becomes very difficult to follow people, uh, and navigate all those cameras. So it's just another added part to that, that we're fortunate that we have all the coverage, but it does, um, add a lot of time to the process too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the principals? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you all for the updates. Um, and we will move on to agenda item number five, policy review. So we've got kind of a pile here, but we did mark some, some, uh, we have a lot of them are first reading. Um, so I think we can pass on those tonight and everybody take a look at them. But we did flag some last time that, that we wanted to take some action on if possible. Um, so if anybody is ready, um, I'll accept a motion on those and then we can discuss or whatever you guys would like to do.
Uh, Andy, this is Anne and, um, the facility policy, I would like to move forward. There was just one spot here that it said waiting for, um, legal information. So that was the KF. And the pages aren't numbered, but it's, um, number 14, close to the end, where it says adding, add wording to include cannabis products. Ask legal counsel for advice.
Number 14. Oh, yep.
So, um, I would say move the policy forward, but I just wasn't sure what the wording was there. Cause I, I think probably Amy came up with this information or the wording.
I think that's right. I mean, I'm, uh, Kathy put this in, so I'm, I'm assuming that there's not anything further on that. Um, I suppose if it would, if everybody would be in agreement, we could take it the way it is. And, you know, similar to what we do with, um, the minutes sometime and say, with, uh, with the intent to add the language from the attorney on number 14 or, or something along those lines.
And I make a motion to, um, to accept this with that wording for number 14.
Okay.
Second, this is Amy.
All right. Um, discussion around the facilities use policy, KF.
Andy, this is April. Um, I did some digging in preparation for this meeting. And excuse me, I reviewed the New Hampshire school board policy and compared it to our policy. Um, one thing, a specific, um, line that the New Hampshire school board policy has that our policy does not have is no school building or facility shall be used for any purpose, which could result in picketing, rioting, disturbing the peace or damage to property or for any purpose prohibited by law. I'm not sure if that's language that we would want to include in our policy, but I felt like it would be worth bringing forward to all of you.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing, and I'm not sure if I missed it because I did try to go through the policies, but, um, the New Hampshire school board policy also, um, the last line of their policy states, the board must approve any special request or exceptions to this policy and our regulations. Um, I did not see that stipulation in the current, um, KF that is before us tonight.
Can you say that one more time, April?
Sure. The board must approve any special request or exceptions to this policy and our regulations. I'm not sure if there's similar language and I somehow missed it.
I don't think so. I'm just wondering, and, and I certainly don't, don't know the legalese, but it seems like, I, I feel like that's kind of the default for every policy, right? If we have a policy and we're going to allow somebody to go outside that policy, it would require our approval in general, I would think. But there's, I'm just wondering why, what the intent, why, why that needs to be there? Cause it seems like it should just always happen. But maybe I'm wrong.
Uh, just one other question. I'm not sure.
Sorry, Jean?
I think Josh has his hand up. He can answer that.
Oh, I can't see him. Um, sure. Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
Right here. I don't have the policy in front of me, but, um, per my recollection of reading the policy many times, it is you guys have the ability to sway from what the policy says, or it says you're a signee. So I think it would give the ability of Ms. Sherman, Aunt Ms. Wheeler, someone like myself, the ability to, um, go away from what the policy says on certain situations, um, that you don't necessarily have to bring to your guys' level every single time.
Gotcha. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Josh. Um, one other question. I'm not sure if I missed this. This is also mentioned in the New Hampshire school board policy, but it says when schools have been closed due to inclement weather, the facilities will be closed for all use. The schools do not assume the responsibility of contacting groups when such closures occur. I don't know if I missed similar language, but I didn't see anything. So anyone else read that policy? Thanks, Josh.
So I can't say if it says in our policy that we don't contact, but I know our depart, department procedures is whenever schools canceled, we do reach out to any group that was scheduled to use the facilities on that day and let them know, um, the buildings will be closed.
Um, I am a girl scout leader of a local troop and that has not always happened. And I have no beef with it not happening if the school is closed, but I just think for clarity, it would be nice if we could include a statement, um, similar to that, especially since it's the New Hampshire School Board Association policy, recommended policy. Thank you.
Any other discussion on KF?
Um, Anne, if, I was just going to say, if you're, I will second a friendly amendment if you wanted to accept those additions.
Yeah, I, I just had a, a question on, um, when A- Amy, uh, excuse me, April was discussing the building can't be used for picketing or rioting. Um, I'm not sure if we need that because this is an, it, it, we, we would have to go through an approval to use the building. So I'm not sure how that would fit into this policy because this policy is saying that you get a, you know, you have to go through these stipulations to get approved to use the building.
Yeah, I thi- I think I agree. I, I don't, I don't, the way I heard what April said, I don't think it said it can't be used for picketing or rioting. I think it can't be used for anything that might incite picketing or rioting.
Result in, result in, yes.
You're not saying weird because like.
Who's, who's to say what's going to result?
Election could, right? Like.
Absolutely. You know, so what is in, in sight, you know, one.
If I can just play devil's advocate for a minute, I think this is just like a legal backstop, you know, because there are certain folks who might, um, convene an event that is designed to be held, you know, in a classroom in seats, but to get people going and end up with some sort of demonstration outside. Um, so I think this just, and, and if that sort of demonstration call caused legal damages to the school district and we had this policy with this language in place, it would provide us some legal liability.
Gotcha.
Thank you. So Amy, you feel comfortable putting that portion in?
Yeah.
Um, the last thing I just wanted to add is, um, if when April was saying if there's no school that the building can't be used, we as the town have the, um, elections and obviously they're most often in, in very bad weather. Every March it seems to have a blizzard. But the other thing too, is that when we have the public, um, public meeting concerning the budgets, where we go and present the school budget and the, the town budget, the public hearing, we have to actually by law, if we have this on the books to actually open the meeting, we physically have to go to the building and cancel the meeting. So that might be an issue if we say if this, if the building's closed, we can't use the, the building. It's happened a few times.
I think that was, well, first, if schools, that wouldn't affect, I'm trying to think. Those are always on Saturdays though, right?
No, um, the.
The elections, but the, the March, the two March meetings?
The two March.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm taking it out loud. Go ahead. Oh, did I freeze or did Anne freeze? I see other people moving. Josh?
So just to add on to that, anytime there's been inclement weather, whether schools happened or not, if there's a town meeting or a school board meeting, the, the facilities department is always there. And we plan on you guys showing up, whether you're there just to open the meeting and then close it. Or if at some point in time throughout the day, the meeting is canceled, we are there planning that you guys will still be there. Um, when, when this speaks for.
Pause a second. I think we lost it. She's frozen on my screen and her little, I've got a little exclamation point. Let's give her a minute.
Yeah, she's frozen on mine too.
Okay. Let's just give her, we'll, we'll pause a minute or two and see if we get her back. So she was the one that was asking the question. Oh, I see her moving now. Anne, can you?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I just lost everybody for a moment there.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
So it, regarding inclement weather, if there's a town meeting, if there's a school district meeting, we're always there as, as the facilities department, as a school district. And we plan that that meeting is still going to happen, whether there's school or not. I think the verbiage with the policy is more in regards to if there's basketball scheduled for that day for the local town group, or if there's a soccer practice or whatever it may be. But regarding school district and town meetings, they will always happen until someone higher, way higher up the ladder cancels the meeting or whether you come in to open the meeting and then close it, we will always be there. Um, specifically because we need to make sure the heat's on and the snow has been cleared to allow access to the, the building.
Thank you very much, Josh.
You're welcome.
Andy, um, if I may ask, Anne, is, are you uncomfortable with the word all that the sample policy reads? If it just said that, you know, if the, if the facility is closed due to inclement weather, the facilities will be closed for use instead of for all use?
Yes, that would be, that would be easier, only because by law we have to open the meeting and if we're going to cancel it, we physically have to go there and, and open and, and close. So that, that would be fine.
So just striking the word all?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, Amy, do you still second?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we might want to move the question also.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so on a roll call vote to accept K F with the, um, with the amendments proposed tonight. Um, and I think Sandy, do you feel comfortable that you've got those?
No, but I'm hoping that somebody will send that, um, additional wording. Cause I don't have access to your board packet.
Okay, I'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
All right, um, then on a roll call vote, I'll start with April this time.
Uh, yes.
Uh, Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And Andy's yes. So we got one. All right, um, anybody ready for action on I H A M or I H B G?
Andy, this is April. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, uh, New Hampshire School Board Association's sample policy of I H A M Health Education and Exemption. Or that we, excuse me, adopt as our own.
This is Amy. I'll second that.
All right, um, discussion around I H A M.
Andy, this is Anne. So, um, April is looking to adopt what New Hampshire School Board Association has put out and not ours?
Correct.
I did have a question on, um, so on, on page one, opt-out procedure forms, it just seems like it's, it's redundant in the words that it's, that are written here of saying, you know, parents or student can opt out, but they need to sign the form. In the next paragraph down, it says the same thing. But other than that, I, I, it's with me.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going back and forth comparing the two right now. If you give me just a second.
Sure.
See in the, uh, New Hampshire School Board, it sounds like the only reason that you can opt out is for religious reasons. But in ours, there's options for, it doesn't have to be religious reason, re- uh, reason. And it also states that there has to be, uh, an alternative assignment given. So I'm seeing a difference there and I think ours might be, and it also includes a religious reasoning also. So I think ours, the one we have may be more inclusive because not all reasoning to get out of, you know, health or sex ed classes have to do with religion. So is it, anybody got any, I don't know, Amy, do you?
I, um, yeah, hold on. Okay, yeah, I see the difference you're talking about, Jean. Um, I, I feel the same, I have the same feeling that Andy expressed in a different context. Um, about this, which is like, I tend to trust the experts. I know the School Board Association hammers out every angle and every word of these policies. Um, and so I put a lot of deference into them. Um, I also, not to answer your question with a question, Jean, but I wonder if we have, um, this policy, that little note there, you know, RSA one eighty-six eleven, uh, Roman ten dash C. That might be the additional opt-out rights that you're talking about. So I don't know if we have policy I G E, but whatever the state law is, we can't make the policy that changes that.
Right.
And I can look that law up real quick.
Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering which one falls within the state law.
Well, Jean, on, on page two of the New Hampshire Municipal one, it does say any student who is expected, uh, who exempted from this request, um, under this policy may be given an alternative assignment sufficient to meet the state requirements. So is it because it say they may be given an assignment and ours thinks they will be given an assignment?
No, no, it's more along the lines of the reasons for, uh, opting out.
Oh, I got, okay.
Uh, because on the New Hampshire School Board, it's, it's talking, I just want to make sure I'm reading it right. I saw it earlier today when I was looking at it, but yeah, it's.
Yeah, the le- the last paragraph on the first page is that they do not want their child to participate in a particular unit of health or, uh, for religious use, reason, must complete the health education.
Above that again, it says.
Yeah. Um, can I read what that state law says? Cause I think it might help with this conversation. Um, the state law that's referenced there, small c, um, requires school districts to adopt a policy allowing an exception to specific course material based on a parent's or legal guardian's determination that the, the material is objectionable. And so that objection is not defined. You know, it, it could be religious or it could be any manner of, of personal cultural choice reasons. Um, so I think that that broader ability to object is covered under state law. Um, and I am curious whether we do have that policy I G E which implements this or, you know, articulates the state law.
This is, go ahead. This is April and, um, Pembroke School District does have a policy I G E in place.
Okay, thanks. So I do stand firm in, in supporting the School Board Association version on this policy.
Okay, I'm good then too. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, then on a roll call vote, we've got a motion to accept the N H S B A version of I H A M Health Education and Exemption Policy. On a roll call vote, Amy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I M S motion carries. Thank you. Check that one off. Anybody have anything for I H B G Home Education Instruction?
Andy, this is Anne. I did have a question. Um, I was re- read it a few times, the Pembroke School Board version. Um, it does say that, you know, you may, um, elect, you know, to go to homeschool the child. And it didn't say anything here. Does the parents have to renew every year? In the, this, the New Hampshire School Board Association said that it would be continuing. I just didn't know in ours if it said they had to renew this every year.
So, Andy, if I may, this is April. Um, the home education laws were updated in two thousand eighteen. I don't, I believe that our policy hasn't been updated since that time. At our current home education policy does not reflect current state law. And so the reason that this is imperative is to make sure that our policy matches. So to answer your specific question, in New Hampshire, you only need to notify once. If you decide you're no longer going to home educate your child, at that point you have to notify, but there, that you, you'll, you're no longer home educating your child, you can notify your local school district, your superintendent, you can notify, um, a private school who's willing to act as a participating agent. Or you can notify the Education Commissioner of the state. But there is no longer an annual requirement to notify for home education.
Thank you, April. It does say we last updated it in two thousand twelve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the S B A one was just done in eighteen, so that's fairly recent as far as policy is concerned.
April, I was hoping that you, um, I think of you as, you know, most expert in home education topics. Also most expert in our policies in general. And I was hoping you would share with us, do you recommend going with the New Hampshire, um, School Board Association template policy?
I know this is a policy that we flagged for action at this meeting. Um, in my notes, I prefer to wait for another meeting just because there are some parties that I would like to speak to before I have full confidence. I do have confidence in what the New Hampshire School Board Association put out, um, but I know there was recently a technical assistance bulletin from the D O E. I just want to talk to some experts in the field, um, of home education before I feel comfortable making a motion to move this forward.
Thanks for that input. Andy, can you, um, remind us? Is there some big problem with us not taking action on this policy tonight?
Um, I don't, I don't think it's essential. I think, I think it's what April stated is that it's, it's out of date and doesn't align with state law right now. So, um, we'll definitely keep it in the, in the priority section here, but, um, if April thinks there's good cause to wait one more time, I'm, I'm certainly okay with that.
Um, Andy, just one other thing, um, the S A U website has been updated, um, when the school year began, there was an outdated form on the S A U website that has now been updated to a link to the sample form at the New Hampshire Department of Education website. So if someone's looking for, actively looking for information, they're going to find the correct form on the S A U website.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, so ignoring the first reading ones for a minute, there, we have three others that are on a second reading. If there's anybody that feels comfortable taking action on D G A Authorized Signatures, D K, uh, Payment Procedures, or E B C J L C E, Emergency Care and First Aid, um, I'll hear that. If not, we can probably move on.
Uh, I, I, I was reading, so I may have missed this. Did, we had a motion on the table to, uh, accept the school, New Hampshire School Board Association, I H B G Home Education Plan? So that.
I don't think we, I don't think we had a motion.
Okay.
If we did, I missed.
Uh, I thought I heard a motion. I didn't know if it was tabled or not.
April said that she was, she would make a motion if that language was clarified. I don't have a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not ready to take any action on any of those policies, Andy.
Okay, anybody else? All right, um, let's move on then to agenda number six, informational items. I don't have anything. Patty's not here. I guess I'll look to Mr. Morris quickly and see if he's got anything. Nope, he's shaking his head no. So we can move right through that one. Um, and that brings us to our next public comment section, agenda item number seven. Um, so I'll check in with Sandy one more time. Sandy, did you happen to get any emails from that first time around from the phone folks? Nope.
No, I did not, but maybe you want to start with the phone folks.
Yeah, so, um, I think Linda was able to do the star six thing. So, uh, there are only two people on the phone right now. So if, if anybody on the phone wants to contribute to public comment, um, you can hit star six, I think. I think I'm remembering that right. Um, and I'll recognize you to speak. Okay, um, I'll check back in again at the end since there's only a couple anyway, but Mr. Morris, if you've got hands, um, we can do those.
Yeah, I do have one, uh, Deanna.
All right, go ahead, Deanna. Uh, Deanna, I'm not sure if you're talking, but it looks, oh, there you go.
There you go.
Okay, it was yelling at me. Um, Donna Drive, sorry, gotta repeat myself. Um, Pembroke, New Hampshire, of course, and I just wanted to put my two cents out there in regard to our situation. Um, you guys talking, going remote, I understand there's issues with, you know, staffing and quarantining and some regulations you guys are stuck with from the state. I understand what April Barker was saying in that regard. So disagree with some of that. Um, but you guys also need to consider these families and the situations you're putting us in. We are not in a financial position to continue to sustain paying for daycare for two little kids. I'm not in the same position I was in in the spring with my work in terms of I can't be furloughed in home and getting stimulus money. I have the job right now that I'm trying to recover because I work at a specialty doctor's office. We're part of the recovery task force, so we're being asked to work overtime, so I'm not able to be home with these children this time. So therefore, if you guys go remote, we can't sustain Boys and Girls Club. My twelve-year-old's going to be teaching my kids at home, or my three children are going to literally be failing at school because they are going to be barely participating because they're on their own. I cannot be the only family in this kind of situation and you guys need to think about these things. Other than just, we have quarantining issues. I know a neighbor of mine who is a former teacher and has been looking to try to substitute within the district and has been hitting firewall after firewall. She can't find advertisement. She's tried to find the ability to apply as a substitute. You guys say you don't have enough substitutes. You've got people trying to be one and finding a hard time getting that position and getting to the right people. So you guys need to actually work a little harder, maybe advertising for substitutes and making it easier to open those doors. Um, there's ways around it. You guys need to look for more solutions. These kids need to keep getting their education. My kids are going to fall behind more than they already are. They have great teachers and they aren't able to utilize them as much as they should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands?
Yeah, we have Kevin Foss.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, I'll keep it brief. I'm gonna try and put my thoughts on paper and send to you guys a little more articulately. Um, but earlier this evening, when you guys were talking about switching to a, um, possible remote option for the holiday season. My daughter's fully remote, so that doesn't affect me really much. Aside from the conversation that you guys had about combining cohorts. I really would implore this board to make the decision about remote versus hybrid. But let your building leadership make the decision about how they implement that. Right now, my daughter's cohort for fully remote is a, uh, A B pattern of one day synchronous live instruction and one day asynchronous through seesaw. And as a first grader, I would not want her doing three, three and a half hours of screen time every day. I am actually, um, pleasantly surprised and very pleased with the experience she is getting through this remote instruction. Uh, the workload on an asynchronous day, I actually find to be much more rigorous than the live instruction. The, uh, the two teachers, and I'm going to mention them by name because they're doing a great job, Mrs. Tilton and Mrs. Batts at Hill School. Um, they really plan ahead. They push out a series of mini lessons on the asynchronous days. Um, they send out, um, they do a bag exchange every two weeks with manipulatives and paperwork, um, worksheets, things like that. Um, it's a good blend of live screen instruction and tactile, um, pen to paper. Um, which is very important at that young age group. So make the decision you guys need to make, but really let your building leadership, um, determine how they best implement that once you've made the decision. And like I said, I will give you more articulate thoughts, um, via email, email this weekend.
Thank you.
Others? Yeah, we have Brian G.
Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. It's Brian Gleaton again. Um, I want to echo, uh, Deanna's comments from earlier, although my specific situation isn't as dire as hers. I've voiced my opinion multiple times, uh, how I feel, uh, children should be in school as much as possible. However, I did want to take this moment, uh, to discuss something different. Being in the beginning of budget season, um, I would implore the board to pretend, do a full, um, I T infrastructure check for all of the schools. I'm very happy to hear that Hill School is up and running today. Um, but our I T infrastructure is obviously lacking. And with budget season coming up, I think it's a perfect time to start looking into upgrades and to keep us um, as far ahead in the future as possible. Regardless of if students are going to be in school or remote or hybrid, a, a, a strong I T infrastructure in the building is going to be, uh, A, a, a strong IT infrastructure in the building is going to be, uh, best for all involved, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Uh, Tammy Sanjan.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Hi, I want to, um, reinforce something that Kevin Foss said as far as combining cohorts. Um, I agree that that should be left up to building principles. Um, what I don't think some people understand is a lot of our elementary kiddos are, they are in daycare or they need, um, childcare or, you know, an adult with them. Um, we can't just assign them something, um, like you can in, with middle school and high school students. Um, so seesaw is very, um, effective. The lessons that we put on there, teachers are able to make videos of instructions. The kids can actually go back and replay the videos if they get stuck. There's also voice instructions, and there's also written instructions, and then we also go on and give the students feedback before we approve them, so seesaw is a very effective tool. Um, and also, um, I agree that students that young should not have screen time every single day for three plus hours a day. Um, they just can't sustain it, and the other concern is if we go, you know, combine cohorts and we have all these students in childcare, we don't know if their bandwidth can sustain all of those kids being on the computer every single day, um, for that many hours. So, and, you know, along with the noise and the distractions at childcare, we have to consider what is going to be the most effective, so, um, you know, having the live time is great a couple times a week for those kids. But the seesaw is effective, and the things that we put on are, um, application of what they have learned in class or live remote the day before. So they are things that the students, um, should be able to do independently without the help from an adult. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is it for raised hands.
Okay, um, I guess I'll go back to the phones one more time. And so if you're on the phone and you've got something to contribute to public comment, hit star six. Okay, then we will close public comment and the board has need to go into non-public session under New Hampshire RSA 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, small letter A, which is the dismissal promotion compensation or disciplining of an employee, or the investigation of any charge against him or her on a roll call vote at nine twenty-five, Anne?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And, I mean, so if you're on the phone, you're going to get moved to.
Can, can we just do that, try to stick with that new habit, Andy, of you announcing the next two board meetings, please?
Oh, God, you gotta do two, huh? I have one right in front of me, uh, let me pull up the calendar real quick.
The seventeenth and the first.
Uh, twelve one?
Yes.
Okay, so next meeting is, um, November seventeenth and, and December first at six thirty PM. Um, I will say currently, the intention of November seventeenth meeting is to still be in this format. But I wanted to tell everybody that's still up the call, uh, maybe I should have said this earlier. We are investigating different possibilities to maybe get the board at least in person, but still be able to provide a live interactive, um, environment like we have here, so, uh, Patty has been working with Josh Brube, it's a SU IT guy. Uh, and the, they've evaluated it in, um, Google Meet, I believe it was, and closed captioning on there. Efficient, and I think some, one or other government body has now said that it is viable, uh, to use for these types of meetings. So we're looking into that, um, my intention as, as the person that has the responsibility of uh, you know, scheduling meetings and, and setting them up, what I would like to see is for the board to be able to be in person. Um, because I think the conversations would go more smoothly and the meetings would be shorter and get more accomplished. Um, but I personally am still not comfortable, especially with everything that we heard tonight, with having more than a handful of people in the cafeteria with us. Um, so what I would like to see happen, and of course, I can't tell anybody what to do, if we provide public, a public place for the meeting, you are certainly welcome there. Um, but my hope is that we can meet in person and have a handful of the public with us, but still be able to see the, the hundred people that we have been having on these calls, um, join us electronically, so that we can still have high participation numbers. Um, but we can also meet in person and, and hopefully, you know, move things along a little, so we're headed that way. I don't think we're going to make it there for the November seventeenth meeting, um, the intention for that one is still going to be WebEx. Um, but stay tuned and, and we'll, we'll keep people in the loop on that.
Um, Andy, this is Anne, I have a question, so, but if we're full remote, we can't be in the building?
Yeah, I, I would say that's accurate, if, if the schools end up going full remote, I would not press us being in the building either.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, this is April, do you have any information about possibly using Google Meets? If it's available to us because of the live closed captioning in lieu of the current platform we're using?
Yeah, that's, I think, i- if we, oh, do you mean even if we were still in, like this, if we were not in person? Uh-oh, did I freeze? April, are you still there?
I'm still here, yes, I just got a message from Sandy that just says I have no audio.
Uh-oh. Okay, um, well, I think, I think we're basically done anyway, so, yeah, I mean, yes, that, that's, they're looking at all angles of Google Meet right now, but there's not, there's, there hasn't been a decision yet, but it looks like we're going to be heading in that direction.
Thank you.
Um, Andy, this is Anne, um, I'm sorry, I was remiss to thank the, um, the school staffing. Um, Jim Goff wanted to be sure that we did a shout out to Josh and, um, also all the custodian staff for helping us on the election day.
All right, I'll pass that along to Sandy for the minutes. All right.
Can we move to adjourn? I move to adjourn.
Excellent.
I'll second, this is Anne.
Thank you, on a roll call vote at nine forty-three, uh, Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Yes.